All right, if we could please take our seats and welcome to this evening's work session. First order of business is preliminary items for next BOC meeting. Are there any items that the, any board member would like to take?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I just want to know, there's a couple duplicates on here for number eight. Is duplicate of number four?
Mm-hmm.
Eight and four.
Yes, and also eleven and twelve are duplicated as well.
Yeah, those were just oversights. Whoever put it into the immune system did it twice. They probably put it in different dates and wanted to make sure it was on that schedule. I mean, on the next board meeting schedule, agenda. However, I do would like for item number 11 to be discussed, and that is the commission district maps. So I'm going to call on Mr. Reed to come and give us a brief synopsis as to what we're looking at.
And also, can we pull to begin to discuss some as well, just for clarification, number, item number six?
Number six. What is six? Let's see.
It has an explanation on it.
Addition of the police.
It has, yeah, it has an explanation. Did yours have that?
It has a slide one, I just want to get a little bit more clarification on it. All right. Mr. Reed.
Oh, you have something?
I have something. Yes, I have. Now, I'm assuming that these things that presented to us on this preliminary will be on our agenda, is that correct?
Yes and no. Yes, this is what the directors have put in the immune system for us to consider for the next board meeting, but however, the agenda meeting is tomorrow at 2:00. At that time, they can pull any of these items off or hold for the next board meeting or, you know, for any different reasons, they can ask for it to not be added for the next meeting.
Well, I know in the past, we have had emergency items to come to us.
Right.
And we've acted on those. But I see several things, four, five, nine, 10, are things that are basically on our, or should be on our, but during the budget process. So are we doing away with the budget process?
No, but as you know, any elected official has a right to ask for an item to be presented for the Board of Commissioners. They have been given that information, that the budget cycle is forthcoming, and they chose to go ahead. Some of those items are no budgetary impacts. So they wanted to present it at this board here.
Well, I wish we would decide what we're going to do.
What do you mean?
Are we going to continue to do this and just have a budget all year round and all? And, or are we going to stick with having our budget that's to be passed or official July 1, which will be for the next fiscal year? Or are we going to keep acting on these things?
Well, we're acting on them because they're asking us to act on it in their capacity as being an elected official, just like every board member on this board can bring forth an item for consideration. Elected officials have that same last.
Okay, I'm just so used to in the past that we have just emergency items that will come before us instead of regular budgetary items.
Again, it's their request, and we asked them if they would like to hold it until the budgetary process. They indicated that they would like be heard in the next board meeting.
To be heard or have it on there? Because from what I'm assuming, it's only up to us to vote.
Have it on there for a decision, yes.
Well, okay.
Any others?
Um.
Yes, ma'am.
The Georgia humanities art grant. Can somebody tell us about that before we vote on that?
What item is that?
That's number five.
I think that might be, the library system is, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, yes. I believe, give me one second, it's, I believe it's a $2,500 grant that the library system is applying for to purchase library books.
Okay. We could have a little bit more information when we, also, this is not on here, but I know that on Thursday has been, I think, an allotment of these home tests, COVID home tests, to be at the three locations, gym, I mean, yeah, gym.
Stadiums.
Stadiums.
Yes.
Just the thought, and if we would think about perhaps having some at our senior centers, because we have seniors that may not have transportation to get to these different locations, and if we could allow two, 300, 200 each senior center, I mean, just the thought.
I concur.
Well, what we have done is made sure that we did set some to aside. So we have some set to the side for employees and for other, for other reasons such as the seniors and so forth. So yes, that was contemplated.
Okay, well, I would like for us to really consider it if it's agreed upon.
I agree.
I just got the last call from some seniors about that about an hour and a half ago.
Yeah, like I said, we have tickets set aside for that purpose, so that's taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I wait. Can I speak? I think that if I'm hearing Commissioner correctly, and the other commissioners have all agreed, it's not so much as saying that we just have set some aside. I believe that it's pertinent that we get with Tori Strater, who is the Director of Senior Services, find out how many seniors, they have a very good number of seniors that they know who come through those centers, so there's no overlapping, and make sure that that specific amount, including additional amounts, are put aside for each of these senior centers, and that would include the Charlie Griswold Center, the Senior Center in Commissioner Hamburg's district, the Senior Center also in District 1. We don't have a Senior Center in District 3 alone, but there is a Senior Services within our center. I believe that should be priority. I think that the efforts are definitely gallant efforts, but I think that definitely this board should have a little bit more input as opposed to a text message about are we okay with purchasing. We're okay with purchasing, but as commissioners, we know the needs in this community. We get those phone calls. So if it's okay with the board, I would like for us to make sure that we do that.
And operationally, that is, has been contemplated, and that's something that will be done, Commissioner.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, one last thing, and I think Chuck is going to do this, present the commission districts, redistricting maps and all, if we could get a copy, okay. Thanks.
Any others? All right, Mr. Reed.
Good evening again. First to respond to Commissioner Hamburg's request about the Georgia ARP, I'm sorry, the humanities grant is $2,500. The proposed program is a family book club focusing on diverse titles for children in preschool through eighth grade, and they are going to purchase 10, book sets for 10 programs to, for this book club. That's according to what's on the legislative request. So I'm going to speak briefly on redistricting along with the community development. So the overview of the presentation today is three questions about the adoption of new commissioner district maps. That's Resolution 202218. Why does the board need to adopt new maps? What are those proposed changes? And what are the next steps? So first, why do we adopt new maps? Every 10 years, all levels of government from, as you've seen at the state level, they have to redraw district lines to ensure that there's an equal population throughout. Then the 2020 census demonstrated that Clayton County was one of 97 Georgia counties that gained residence. There's an overview of Georgia, the light green populations were the ones that gained populations, or light green counties, sorry, were the ones that gained populations, the dark blue ones were the ones that lost populations, and that could be from one to several thousand. I just wanted to show you what the map looked like for the state. So the purpose of the redistricting is to make sure that each district has as close to as equal population as practicable. According to the census, we have about 297,000 citizens or residents, according to the 2020 census. So the ideal district size is about 74,400 residents. State law was recently changed, 28-1-14.1. It changed how the process of how maps were drawn. It used to be that counties could just draw them, adopt them, and then send them to the state. The state reapportionment office was finding that counties weren't doing it correctly, and they were having a lot of technical issues. So now they started that the state has to, if they draw the maps, then they don't have to pre- pre-approve them. If the county draws the maps, they have to go to the state, state has to approve them, then send them back saying, okay, these are okay, then you adopt them. So these maps that are proposed came straight from the state reapportionment office as requested or at least sponsored by Representative Rhonda Berno. Again, that's what I just said. So the proposed, oops, the proposed demographics, this is a population summary that provided to you all last month. If you look at the very small, the district that shows 1, 2, 3, and 4, the last category, it shows you what the population's numbers would be, 74,851 in District 1, 73,767 in District 2, 74,799 in District 3, and 74,178 in District 4. And it shows you the numbers, population of 18-plus, non-Hispanic, Black, Hispanic origin, Asian, et cetera, et cetera. So what are the proposed changes? I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ajike to have him talk to you about what areas there are. That's a quick summary there, but I'll turn it over to him to discuss a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Did I hear you say that our delegation has approved?
No. So the way that state law requires that, in order for the state SRO office, the reapportionment office, to even be able to begin talking with us, they have to have a legislative sponsor. So she is going to carry this legislation once the board decides what maps wants to approve, she will carry that legislation through to get passed by the General Assembly.
Thank you.
Our chairman and commissioners, good evening. There are three areas in the redistricting that show differences. Those three areas are the areas that you see circled on the maps. Between District 2 and 3, and between District 3 and 4, District 1 had no changes.
Thank you, Chief.
So in District 2 and 3, where you have the blue circle, lower left corner, it's where the change actually occurred. The blue of District 2 extended before into where 3 is, but the new 2 is the new line that you're seeing. Therefore, the blue that touches the green becomes the parts of District 2 that will go into 3. And in that area, we showed the county properties that are affected. You have 705 county parcels. Some of the notable facilities will be Lake Ridge Elementary School and Shadow Ridge Apartments, Reserve at Garden Walk Apartments, and currently, you have five current permits in that area, not much of an activity, and you have eight active business licenses in that area. So this is parts of District 2 that went into, that went into District 3. This here is parts of District 4 that will be absorbed by District 2. Again, you see where the purple color of District 4 is beyond the red boundary, so that's the part that's going into. In that area, we have 650 parcels involved in the city of Riverdale, 675 parcels in the county. Other notable facilities, Alfreda Harper Elementary School, Sequoia Middle School, and Riverdale Elementary School. You also have Stratford Arms Homes Apartments, Riverdale Clayton Apartments, Riverdale Estate Condos, Ascent at Riverdale Apartments. You also have the current activities, prayer, our preview in community development, it's five current permits, and three active business licenses. And the next place we had a change, it's between District 3 and 4. Lower right-hand corner, where the circle is, you'll see a little bit of District 3 that will be absorbed by District 4. But in this area, it's entirely all in the city of Lovejoy. There are two parcels there, and those two parcels comprises of Bear Creek Apartment and Villas at Hampton Apartment. So those are the three changes in what was submitted as compared to the existing commission districts.
Before you switch.
Commissioner.
Yes. Can you blow this area up a little bit more on the District 3 area? Are we able to do so?
A little bit.
Because I'm missing the roads there, and if not, I know Parks and Rec has a Google map versions of it.
Mm-hmm. Down the road.
I'm going to need the specific roads if you all can in that lower part, because those maps were a little bit difficult to read, but we can do a follow-up on that if that's okay.
Commissioner, actually, we actually had them live, as we can pull them up here, we can let you see exactly where that is.
And not to hold up the meeting, you could just forward it to me later.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Reed or Mr. Ajike?
I do. Who drew these maps?
This was, the proposed maps were provided by the state reapportionment office. These are not, well, let me, let me actually talk about two quick things, and then I'll come back to that question. So if these maps are acceptable. Okay, that, these maps right here are the ones that are being considered, or at least they're on the agenda under the 202218. If these maps pass, we have to advertise in local paper that it'll be considered by the General Assembly. It'll be going to the General Assembly for approval, and the governor has put all counties on a very short timeline. He wants all the, all maps pass before February 18th, mainly because there are elections coming up, and the elections office has to go through and start sending out new district cards, all the things that pass from that. So he's given counties until February 18th to get the legislative, the legislation done and passed so that he can have all that done. That's, that's just what he's done. And so now, let me answer your question, Commissioner. These were maps that were proposed by the state, by the state reapportionment office. These are not the only way that they can be, they can be drawn. The main thing is that they have to draw them in a way that gives equal.
Amount of residents.
Right, equal citizens, as equal as possible.
So when, when do we get a chance to voice our opinion? Do we get a chance?
Yes, if you have issues that you, you know, don't want to see here, let me know. I can arrange a time to have you meet with the people from the state reapportionment office, that we can come back, we'll bring them, obviously, you'll have to come back for the February meeting to have those approved, and then we'll send them to.
Well, I would like to get with whomever.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Anderson.
You said for each district, it's going to be about 74,400 residents, is that true? Is that correct?
That's what the ideals, what they were trying to draw them to be. But of course, they have to draw them based on where the lines are, so they, some of them are a little less than 74,399, some of them are just slightly above.
Okay.
And one of the population districts, they show where the deviations are, some are slightly a little, some are slightly less, some are slightly more.
And that's why I asked, because I knew it was going to be some deviation in those districts, not just at the 74,000, but some may have, what, 73 or 75?
Correct. So right here, you'll see like the population there, there's a deviation, so that second column shows the 73, 74,399 was the ideal. Districts 1 and 3 had actually a little bit more than that ideal. Districts 2 and 4 had slightly less than the ideal.
I would like to make one comment, and specifically, I know it's dealing with the area where Madam Vice Chair is the Commissioner of District 2. I do believe that we need to look at that a little closer because it would bring some clarity. I know for a fact that in the past, and I think when I first ran, there was some confusion where I think both of our names ended up on the ballot for some citizens. So if we're able to go into that area and really get that area cleaned up really well, then I think that's something we should do. I don't know that whoever drew these maps took a close look at that, but I do know that that has been a concern in the past, and those folks, in all fairness, should know that when they're going to vote at their precinct, they shouldn't have to see two names. So I'm okay with that part of it, because I think that it should be very clear on who represents them there. That's pretty much all I have.
And once the, once the board approves whatever maps that you want to see, that will start that process so that when elections sends out the new voter precinct cards, it will have the correct district of who represents who. So that will, this process will clean that up as you request it.
So what's our timeline?
Well, you really have, February 4th.
And this was sent to us, not to interrupt everybody, but this was sent to us in December, and I think that we need to do a little bit better of a job. Even though we got a tight timeline, we are bringing this before the board for explanation a month after I know I requested for it to come before the board. So we need to just tighten up a little bit more on that.
Well, if I remember correctly, we got this, was sent to us.
December 12.
It was sent to us from the state, from Representative Berno.
Well, the, the maps were provided by state reapportionment office and.
Because they sent it to your office, right?
Correct.
And as soon as you got it, you sent it out to us.
Correct.
And that was around that same timeframe?
Yes, in December.
December 12th, and so we're getting it now, exactly a month later, to review.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Do you know any of the parameters that were used to begin to create these maps?
Um.
Because I'm more looking at the deviation percentage of, from the last 10 years to now, that's what I'm taking a look at. So I'm just curious what some of the parameters or variables would have been in creating these maps.
The deviation that you see in that second column is actually relating to the deviation from the, from the ideal of 74,399.
Exactly.
So what they were trying to do is draw maps in such a way that it had 74,000, it's close to 74,399 citizens. Obviously, they can't split apartment complexes, so they had to bring some in, in some areas, they had to bring subdivisions in some areas, so there's going to be a slight deviation from that based on how the county's topography is there. But that's what they were aiming for, to try to come up with a way that gets as close to 74,399 in each district.
Yeah, because it just seems to me, just looking at the maps right now, for the first time, just even some of the logical lines don't seem to make sense. So that's just kind of some of the issues I have with it. So, yeah, if we can begin to get a lot of the streets, a lot of the roads, and what's going on, that would be extremely helpful.
So.
Commissioner.
Not step on toes, I know this is just a discussion. So what I would like for us to consider is, do we have enough time to go through that process? Because if it's required that we have this done by a specific date, and you're saying that there are steps that must be taken in order for us to go a different route, we've already lost 30 days to implement our own process. So we need to go back and find out, do we have time? Because, because we've waited, and I specifically requested for this to come to the board, but because we've waited, we may not even have enough time to go in and change these maps.
Well, there's, there'll be enough time. Fortunately, the state, the reapportionment office has been responsive.
Okay, good.
It so, but you won't have time after the 4th. So whatever changes, I will put you all in touch with the reapportionment office. They will certainly talk to you all, I'll talk with, obviously, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Hamburg, I'll put them in touch with you. You can tell them and see how they can massage it. They'll send those back, we'll lay them out and have them bring it back to you so you can see how those will look, and put them on for the 4th to be, to be approved.
One other question then. I know you mentioned Madam Vice Chair and then the other commissioner, but because it's going to be affecting those other districts that had grown, both District 1 and 3, where I think that it would be to the best interest of the board that those communications, even though they're individually, come back at some point to the board so that we can look at it. Because, you know, I understand that, you know, the other, they want to look at it, but it's going to affect these other areas.
Yes, and I was probably not.
Lake Ridge area.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, you're fine. My only concern is no matter who the commissioner is, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to meet with you if I can, but I think that it's really, it's going to be to the best benefit to that community, that no matter who the commissioner is, that if we have an opportunity to really clean up that area.
And I was not very clear. What I meant is that I'll bring it back at the next work session if you're able to get that stuff, if you're able to get that done to your satisfaction, bring it back at the work session before the 4th, and that way you can see what the new maps look like so that you walk and adopt it on the 4th.
Got it.
And just for the record, you did send this out and asked, in December, and asked us if there was any concerns that we have to get back to you. So I just want to make sure that that is clear to the board members, that he did send it out, and solicit at discussion if there were any concerns. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is it possible to even have some of this information available for us this weekend at the retreat?
Say again now.
Have some of this information that we're asking about at the retreat.
I can certainly reach out, I'll reach out to the state reapportionment office tomorrow and see what their schedule looks like.
Specifically, I'm sorry, Chuck. What specifically does he need to ask them to do?
Even to break down with the differences and deviations from the districts that are growing or adding, which streets, which subdivisions, we have the subdivisions in some of the schools that are affected, and apartments that are conflicted, but we still need those roads as well.
I can provide that to you, because that's, what is provided there is the, is a pictorial. We have the actual streets where the districts are, they provided all that to us in a shape file, so it's laid out on our county GIS. What Mr. Ajike was going to do is pull up and let you see exactly where it was going to go, but for sake of time, I'll make sure that I, that one of us will get, oh, there is, but one of us will get that information till you can see exactly a close-up of what streets, of where the lines will be drawn.
And also with the population deviation as well.
Okay.
I would agree. I think that's an excellent idea, Commissioner. And not to beat it, but I just, I think it's important for us to understand, things of this nature is not something that you would want to just send out an email. This is what these work. This is what these work sessions are for, and that's why I said the loss of the thirty days, because I specifically asked when you sent me the email, that this be presented to the board. Because at the end of the day, we need to hear our colleagues, we need to hear their thoughts, so that we can work collectively to get where we need to be, because we all have to vote on it. So thank you so much, thank you, Commissioner Demont Davis, for bringing up that, and I hope that you can get somebody from the state office here, not just that you all supply it to us, because we may be able to get this work done and be on our way.
They won't be here, but they'll, I'll make sure they, I'll make sure that they talk to you, so that whatever maps that they provide will be provided to you all, for you all to see.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both, appreciate Mr. Agik and Mr. Reed. All right, let's move to I-75 Central Corridor Coalition. Yes, sir. Mr. Ray.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I am here representing the I-75 Central Corridor.
State your full name for us.
Pardon?
State your full name for us.
Oh, yes, Ray Clark. I, I am here representing the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, which is seven counties and six, I mean, six counties and seven cities of the I-75 Central Corridor, where they have been working for some time to try to make some improvements in the way transportation is planned, designed, the way it's implemented. And all of us here know about the I-75 corridor and how difficult it is to, to, to transport through it, and there's, GDOT's got lots of different plans, expanding lanes and et cetera. But what I want to talk to you about is our work, which is, which is, we, we think that it makes really good sense to connect Hartsfield International with Robbins Air Force Base, the number-one employer in, in the state, with the number-four employer in the state. So I'm going to walk through this, and with me, by the way, is Speaker Coleman, I think you, many of you know Speaker Coleman, and he is on our team as well. Let me, so, so we have been working with Amtrak already, and have had some really good discussions, and we, the most important word up there that you hear is that what we got from the Federal Rail Administration was how much they liked this corridor, and they said it had, quote, "independent utility." That's going to be a really important word, important phrase going forward, independent utility. So you all know about the big plans going from Nashville to Savannah, and from Charlotte to, to Atlanta and all that. This corridor has independent utility. We may not see that Nashville to Savannah for, for a long, long time, we may not see that Charlotte to, but we could very well see, if we work together, we could very well see a much sooner rail going from Hartsfield to Robbins. And let me show you what I mean here. Clayton County is probably the most important piece of this entire puzzle for us, because all, all railroads are going to start, they're going to start right here in Clayton County. And Clayton is going to be the key to the success of this corridor, it's a hundred-and-three-mile corridor. And we believe Clayton can benefit from the association with, with the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, because we have, we have some political capital, we have some great relationships now, we have moved this ball forward on our own for, for some time, and what I'm going to ask at the end of this, I'm going to ask that you join with us to be a part of this. So this is GDOT's vision, this is a map that was, that was in the, the environmental impact statement. So as you see, they, each of these have these independent lines, if you, if you see the one from Macon to, to Hartsfield, that's, it's already a part of the GDOT vision. So again, it has independent utility, whether all of this other stuff gets done or not, it'd be, it'd be glorify, it'd be glory, but it doesn't have to for us to have this rail from Hartsfield to Macon. And this is the final environmental impact statement, record of the decision that was, that was presented in July twenty-twenty-one. You can see, see what their vision is, and this is the important phrase I wanted to bring up, this is, these EISs, they're, they're this thick, you got to wade through a lot of stuff, but, but, but here is an important piece. The I-7, this is their definition in their record of decision, that their preferred alternative begins on the eastern side of Hartsfield International Airport, that is Clayton County.
You say Hartsfield-Jackson?
Hartsfield-Jackson. That is, that is the, that is their preferred alternative. So these are words coming out of, out of this environmental impact statement, which would make an ideal intermodal station. And, and Clayton County has all of these things, the S-line connecting with Marta, connected with Hartsfield-Jackson, and, and all that. So there is, so, so they have a preferred alternative of having two terminals. So as you can see, the red line goes East Point, Hayville, down to Forest Park, the yard, and all the former Fort Gillum, that's the S-line. And, and then you see the dotted line going, going down around Lake City over, over to the H-line, that's an abandoned rail line right now. And you've all, you all know the Marta access issue, I know you've got, you've got a lot of discussion going on about that, but here's the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition as it stands now. And with Clayton County joining us, it would be, it would represent seventy billion dollars of the state's GDP, and, and over ten percent of the state's population. We have a clear goal and objective, we know what we want to do, we have broad community support up and down the corridor, hoping that, hoping that you will join with that coalition. And we want to partner to fast-track Amtrak. We're not, we're, we're very interested in seeing Nashville to Savannah, we're very interested in seeing Charlotte to Atlanta, but if all of that doesn't happen in ten years from now, we think we can fast-track our, our sector. So what's doable now? An environmental assessment for this proposed group of work, and let me just quickly tell you what, the difference between an environmental impact statement, which is, which is going to happen for this whole Nashville to Savannah, that's a, Senator Ossoff got eight million dollars for that EIS, that's going to be a four, five, six-year process, it's going to have lots of, lots of different steps in it, it's going to have a draft EIS, a final EIS, lots of public involvement in between. An environmental assessment can be done in a year. An environmental assessment can be done with a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we think an environmental assessment can be done for this, because we're talking about not any green, opening up any greenfield, we're talking about taking the existing track and probably the improvements of the S-line. A station in Clayton County would make all sense in the world as a part of that. There, there's something called logical termini that the, that the DOT uses, we have one in Macon, and I'll show you where that is. Now, we just need one in Clayton County. And the improvements could be in the near term, and not the ten-year horizon. So we need to build a coalition among elected officials, the Georgia General Assembly, which Speaker Coleman has been already working on, Norfolk Southern, and the business community and the nongovernmental organizations. So this is NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, which requires any federal money to be spent, either have an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement. And we, as I said before, we believe that we can do an environmental assessment for this particular segment, because it has independent utility, whether the other things happen or not. And what's doable now is congestion relief. As you know, the, the governor has a very big push on congestion relief out of the port, we think that it's, that, that the, that the governor will support us. Again, Speaker Coleman and I are working with the governor's office and GDOT to get that, to get that support. And as you know, the governor just recently announced a second set of nine new rail tracks at the Mason Mega Terminal. So Macon, the Macon Terminal to Robbins, Robbins is a fourth largest employer, but did you know that, that, that Robbins employees come from seventy-eight counties in Georgia? They draw from all over the state, over twenty-three thousand employees, and it's twenty-five minutes from the Macon Terminal. Birthplace of passion, this is the logical termini in the south, where the station is there, a station is ready. And we think we make a good partner for Clayton County, we have access to the governor and the General Assembly, our, 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 our coalition is broad, and it represents an important slice of, of Georgia. This is what we ask Amtrak, when we just went to Amtrak in November, we asked them to agree that it, that, that the, that the Hartsfield-Jackson to Macon has independent utility, and that Amtrak and the I-75 Central Corridor form a partnership that can bring the necessary political, financial, and political resources to make their dream happen. And these are the three, just an example of three comments that we got from Amtrak senior leadership. You can see that. So, ladies and gentlemen, we ask that you vote in your, in your due process to join the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition and be a part of this movement that we're going to get railed in this corridor, to help move our people. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Clark, so tell us what it, does it take for us to be members of this coalition?
Well, currently, we are revisiting the due structure now, it, and, and you can have input into that due structure, because it is a, it is a discussion now. I represent both the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition and the, and the Middle Georgia Clear Coalition, which has had some tremendous successes as well, and the Middle Georgia Clear Coalition contributes, the Middle Georgia Clear Coalition has a due structure that is based on population with a cap. So I don't know how it's going to come out, whether or not we have a set fee, or whether or not we base, base it on, on population, that is for the elected officials, such as yourself, to, to, to decide how you want to do that. I have put a budget together based on goals and objectives, not just, not just an ethereal budget, not just a budget request, but set the goals out and set how much money I think it costs to do each of those, each of those things. And I'll give you one example, that we, we need to be getting our message out now across Georgia through so, through some social media and through making a, a public affairs video, and so we had to raise money for that. And so what we're trying to do this year is build a sustainable budget, because we see there has never been, and there never will be, another opportunity like there is now within the Biden Administration and the Congress to, 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 to actually do something physical like rail, and they have sixty-six billion dollars in rail money in F R, in the Federal Reserve, I, I mean, I'm sorry, the Federal Rail, Railway Administration, and they love us. We, we are working directly with the administrator, Ameet Bose, and, and we're working, when we have workshops, we get the administrator himself, and he, by the way, he did his time in Georgia, so he's a, he's a, he's a Georgia guy, and he, he likes, he likes this section.
So I know there's money available through the FTA for these projects and other grant opportunities, but one of the things this board needs to consider, again, is the dollar amount it would take for membership, and.
It hasn't been that much, it hasn't been that much.
What is that, not that much to you?
I think, I think some counties were paying like fifteen hundred dollars, and I think the smallest county was paying five hundred dollars, and it was a set fee, it wasn't even like, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a rolling fee.
That's subject to change also, as you just alluded to, we'll have Commissioner Davis cut your check for that, he's good for it. Are there any other questions for Ray?
I do have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Davis.
I, I'm hearing about Amtrak, and these are Norfolk Southern tracks?
Yes.
Going after the same money that Marta's going after, what differentiates Marta and how they're going after funding versus you all, how you all going after funding?
We're going for, we're going, A, for a much longer distance, and B, we're going for a much faster rail.
City rail.
We, we think that we will, that we will get more interested in what, real estate development around stations. We have heard the governor say that he, he was not interested in more than three stations in the north on Amtrak. So if you, if you kind of think that that's kind of what he's going to think about, think about going south, then there would be three, you know, major stations, you know, from here to Macon.
And, and how does Norfolk Southern feel about all this? I mean, since I've been here, it seems like they are a little hard to work with.
Well, that's here the difference is between Marta and Amtrak. Amtrak has the right to be on those rails, they have the legal right.
They have the right.
Now, they had to fight for it.
Yeah, but they don't.
They had to fight for that legal right, but they have a legal right where Marta didn't have the legal right to it.
And I guess the, one of the big pieces for me is, what is the positive economic impact and the negative economic impact for us in Clayton County here? Right now, we've not been inundated with a lot of positive fruit, coming from Marta, coming from Hartsfield-Jackson, or any other entity that comes in that wants to partnership with the county.
It's a good question, sir. We, in, in fact, we got five hundred thousand dollars from the General Assembly last, last session, to look at what, what would be the economic impact, what would it take, it's sort of a thirty-thousand-foot level look at the whole corridor, and what would it ta, what, what would it, what would it represent in terms of, in terms of congestion relief, in terms of financial or economic development, et cetera? So that money went, unfortunately, the money got put into the motor fuel pot, and so Senator Kennedy put it in for us, and, but, but Speaker Coleman has been working with GDOT and Janine Miller in the governor's office to make sure that that five hundred thousand dollars gets used for the kind of things that you're talking about, to answer some of the questions that we don't, that we can't answer right now.
Yeah, and, and that's why I think, I'm looking, I hear you talk about the assessment versus the impact study, but it appears to me that there needs to be some kind of impact study done to begin to further and further recognize and more concretely understand some of these benefits, because from the last ones, our school system has suffered greatly from a loss of economic.
Right.
Funds from that.
I agree, I agree, sir, and, and that's, I, I think with, with the five hundred thousand dollars, and Speaker Coleman, as I said, has already met with Janine Miller, and she is happy to have. has already met with Janine Miller, and she is happy to have us, the I-75 Central Corridor shape what kind of questions we want answered out of that.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Everett.
Yes, was that Clark?
Yes, ma'am.
You, Clark and Mr. Coleman, I remember you from back sometime, a former state employee. So I remember you back working with a lot of folk over there. Can you tell us who the members of this coalition are?
Well, they are the, they are the mayors of each of those, each of those seven cities and the, and the commissioners of the, of the, of the county commissions of the seven counties.
Is Atlanta on board?
Atlanta, we met with Fulton County about three weeks ago and, and we are meeting with the new mayor of Atlanta. But our current thinking is, is that, is that this coalition would have independent utility. And then we could work with the mayor and Fulton County to talk about going north. But I am very interested and focused on getting, getting something really done in a hurry. And I think that, I, I think that the Hartsfield-Jackson International to Macon is the most, is the thing that you could get going the quickest.
Okay. Well, here's my thing. You keep mentioning Hartsfield-Jackson and Clayton County, which that relationship isn't as great as some may think. You know, we are on TV with Hartsfield-Jackson when there's a crime committed at the airport because the people are coming here to Clayton County. But other than that, that's really about it. So I don't know if this coalition will be depending on our relationship or what connection we really have with the airport or not. But aside from that, I, I think the part about the Amtrak, and I hope this is what you're saying, could possibly, possibly be located here in Clayton County. Is that correct?
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but none of it will be on airport property?
No, 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 I'm, no, no, I...
Well, I'm thinking about some property already.
I current, when I say Hartsfield-Jackson, I, I guess I'm not saying, I'm not meaning the, the airport property itself. I'm talking about access to, access to.
Okay, okay. I, I just want to be clear on that.
I, I'm, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, I, I, I like this. I don't know, how long have you all been in existence?
Well, the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition has been in existence for about three years. They asked me in September of 2020 to, to kind of take it on and begin to develop some structure, some political capital, some strategies, how to get it moving forward. And so I came on in September 2020. And that's the date I think of that, about it really becoming real.
And Mr. Coleman, how long have you been on, apart?
Oh, Mr. Garnett, I'm thinking September.
Right, I hired him. He, he, the speaker works in, works in my group.
Well, and I'm sure he has a lot of networking partners and all too, so I remember, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's it for me.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. First of all, I saw that you all were coming and I got excited and I appreciate your presentation, but where is my cousin?
He said, what he said was that I, I was supposed to make sure that I told you that he wanted to be here so that he could personally be with you.
I talked to him, actually. Our chairman down in that area is wonderful. And actually, it's interesting, we became commissioners and found out we were related and looked quite different. But anyway, the bottom line is this, I think it's important for our board to understand and for you all to understand, even though Henry County is a part of the I-75 Coalition and I've been down there to talk with you all and even set up the meetings with the ATL. You have to understand that Henry County, along with Clayton County, are a part of the ATL Transit Link Authority, which was passed by the state, which requires for all federal funding and state funding to pass through that board before it goes to any other projects. So with that being stated, I don't know if, if you all are aware, but there's a call for projects right now. And if this is something you're interested in, then you can at least get it on the list, even with your current member of Henry County. So our board, we need to understand whatever we think is a good idea, the bottom line is this, if it's not added, if you're part of this ATL region, which is created by the state, which includes Clayton County as well as Henry County, if this particular project is not put in the call for projects, then there's no discussions on the federal level, really. You know, the federal level is great, but that's why it was set up because previously there was no specific direction on that level and they didn't know where to send the money to the state of Georgia. So that's one thing to keep in mind.
Next stop.
Yes. And I talked to Chris about it, and I know you talked to Chris and you spoke with my fellow board member of Fulton County, the chairman there, but Chairman Pitts. But that's where you need to start. And there's a meeting on January 25th that's going to be an open meeting from 2:00 to 2:00, 2:00 to 3:30. And I'll send it to you as well as to our previous mayor of Macon and to the chairman of, down there. But other than that, I think that it's something that we definitely would benefit from looking into with you all, but there are definitely some definitive steps before this board can join because of the state obligations that need to be addressed.
I, I thank you for that. And if you join the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition, you can be a part of that helping us.
I'll work for that. Okay, we'll talk. Honestly, I have to be careful of that, being the vice chair of that board, but you have what you need with Henry County to go ahead and get that project on the project list. So get involved.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, you have anything?
I'm good. I just, what's your timeline? When do you plan on having all of this done by? And I don't think I heard that part.
Done by is a hard question. I will say that I am, I would like to see something that is what, what I, what we use, I, I used to work for Bill Clinton and, and, and Bill Clinton would always ask, what's our announceable and when? And so I'm hoping to have, I'm hoping that we can have an announceable in 2022.
2022. One other question. Understanding that House Bill 511 was one that Representative Tanner, previous Representative Tanner was pushing, I believe that may have been coinciding with what you all are trying to do. So they're in session, so we might need to kind of have those conversations once again.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your presentation.
Well, thank you for taking the time and it was, it was a great pleasure meeting with you, Ms. Chairman, back in, back in November.
Yep. And continue to stay in touch.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next up is workforce development. Sidney Bourgey.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, constituents and staff. I'm Sidney Elise Bourgey. I'm with the Development Authority. I'm the Business Development Manager. And I'm great to see you guys again. I presented back in August about workforce and the state of workforce. So I just wanted to come on and give you some updates on some of our initiatives. Thank you. Okay. So just a simple overview of the presentation. I'll talk a little bit about the unemployment rate. I will give some updates on our workforce development initiatives and then tell you a little bit about some of our goals for 2022. So our unemployment rate as of November 2021 is 3.5%. We've seen a downward trend, which we're very proud of, and just excited that it's continued to going down and that we're getting that number much further than it was before because as, in 2020, it was like 16%. So we're happy to see that the number is continuously coming down. And while we know that a lot of things contribute to the unemployment rate, we believe that some of our workforce development initiatives have definitely contributed to bringing that unemployment rate down. So let's just talk about a few of them. So back in August, I remember I told you about our Clayton Works website. Just wanted to let you know that it has been launched. This is a great resource for our residents to find information about workshops and events for job fairs and things of that such, job listings, workforce development resources, just some great information that's there. So it's finally launched and you can go and take a look. All right, go back, yeah. And then another feature I kind of wanted to show that I thought was pretty cool that we added is that if an individual is looking for different resources, such as a career center, university vocational training, we have this cool little interactive map where they can type in their location and find the nearest, nearest location to them. So we thought this was a really neat tool that users can use when finding resources in their area. All right. Another thing that we've done is we've actually created a monthly newsletter. And in this newsletter, we have some of the similar information as our website, but it talks a little bit more about some job tips, not only for job seekers, but individuals who are looking to progress in their careers. And currently, we have 236 subscribers and we would love to increase that number by connecting with your constituents newsletters as well, so we can get that information out. Very proud of this. Another thing that we have on here is we send out a monthly job leads list. While on our website, we try to provide jobs, not only in Clayton County, but in the metro Atlanta area, on this list, we try to specify jobs that are specifically in the Clayton County area. So we work with our businesses to make sure that their jobs are posted and listed and sent out to individuals who are actively looking, looking for jobs within the community. All right. And another thing, another update, our training partnership, which I'm sure you guys are well aware, last year, we were able to bridge a relationship between Construction Ready and the Perry Learning Center Academy. And a little bit about Construction Ready. Construction Ready is a four-week boot camp where it gives individuals 18 and older some industry-recognized certifications in the area of construction. So 97%, a little, some facts about this program. When individuals complete the Construction Ready program, 97% of these individuals are actually placed into jobs and they get an average of $13 to $16 an hour. So this is an excellent opportunity for our students and even individuals that are just looking to get skills that are not necessarily looking for, you know, to go into college, but want to get some tangible and marketable skills to go into an in-demand industry like construction. So this is something we're very proud about. And of course, last year, we did several different job fairs. We partnered with our local cities, such as Morrow, Riverdale and Jonesboro, to provide these great job fairs within our county. A lot of the residents were, just really gave us some great feedback about it, saying, oh, man, like, thank you so much for providing these job fairs. Now I don't have to go all the way to, you know, Atlanta Airport or into Atlanta to find jobs. And this was also a great opportunity just to connect our employers with, our employers with people who are looking for jobs currently. And we actually reached, you know, over 300 people through these job fairs. And we've actually received a lot of testimonies too, of individuals that have been able to get a job by going to one of our job, going to our job fairs. And we wanted to share a testimony by, of one of the job seekers. That was really impactful. So have to you take a look?
Let me just tell you, you were here the last time I was here. This shirt, I was hired the last time I was here. I met the individual, then we went into the private room to interview, and then later that day, I interviewed with him again. And in two days, I had a job that has changed my life. I'm so grateful for you and your organization for what you do. Okay? Thank you so much.
So as you can see from that testimony, we are truly making impact, simply doing these small initiatives. You think a job fair is pretty small, but it's really changing lives. And with that, yeah. And with that, I just want to go into some of our goals for this year. So one of the things we want to do, not only with our job fairs, we're going to, of course, continue doing the initiatives that we're doing currently, but we also want to do community resource fairs. Because while, you know, people may get a job, sometimes it's hard to maintain that job because of whether that's transportation or childcare. So we want to make sure that individuals are aware of those wraparound supportive services that are available within the community. So a community resource fair gives these individuals the opportunity to learn about the nonprofits that are available, learn about organizations such work, such as WorkSource Atlanta that provide some of these resources that they need and they're looking for. Additionally, we want to continue to promote some job readiness workshops. Again, we did some surveys with our businesses and a lot of the complaints were individuals do not know what to do once they get into that job. So not only do we want to work on doing some internal programming, but also promoting other programming that's out there that helps individuals understand what the expectation is going into a work environment, as well as that entry portion, even promoting themselves too. When you're in a professional setting, how do you network, et cetera, et cetera? And then finally, we want to continue doing some training programs, just like the Construction Ready program. We want to bring more of these programs within the community in in-demand careers, upskilling our, our residents so they can get some amazing jobs. And you'll find out this a little later, but we actually executed a contract with Goodwill and the city of Riverdale. We're connecting those two entities to help bring additional skills and training there right in the Riverdale center, where, as I'm sure everyone is aware, where the need is most. So those are just some of our goals for this year. And, and essentially, just wanted to come back to, this is our workforce strategy. We, it's as simple as ABC. We work to first get people a job, meet their basic needs. Then we want to help them find a better job. That's that training, that's that upskilling. And then ultimately, we want to help them build a career. So that's connecting them to post-secondary opportunities, that's helping them network and just truly progress in what they're doing. This is what we're doing and I just thank you for allowing me to come here again to speak with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bourgey, for your presentation. I see there's a lot of work going on to find a lot of people good jobs, or jobs in general. So I appreciate all your efforts. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Anderson.
I just want to add, I want to say, good job. Also, I want to ask you, have you all started working with some of the companies that have hard to fill positions? I know you said Goodwill, but we have some companies that have positions that have been really, really hard to fill and they pay really good money. And how can you all, are you all working to connect with those companies so we can get some of our people some of those good paying jobs?
Definitely, yes. So we have been reaching out to companies, letting them know that part of our services is connecting them with those individuals, specific individuals who are interested in that industry, as well as connecting them with qualified individuals and inviting them to our job fairs and advertisement on our website. So we have several services. And if there are any more companies that are coming out, if you can just, you know, feel free to send that to me, send their contact and we will explain more what our services are and how we can help them get people in their positions.
Also, are you working with our colleges and universities and things of that nature to make sure that we get our people educated? That's the main thing. And making sure that they have those backgrounds. Because what you said was, and, and as I was listening, you said, a lot of times, people are going into these jobs, but they don't know what to do.
Right.
And so, again, education is always the key. So are we working with those colleges and universities to make sure, or, or even vocational schools, to make sure that people get that training before they go into these positions?
Definitely. Just like the Goodwill example, Goodwill provides a lot of those training programs that is necessary for individuals who are getting into certain industries. So Goodwill is an example of that. Or even Clayton State, we've been working with them to connect them with, you know, some of our students who are graduating. There are great students who are coming out of Clayton State. How do we keep them here in Clayton County? So we're working with them as well to connect them with high-level positions within the county.
And I'm going to close out with one last question. Also, let's focus on resume building, things of that nature, because a lot of times, people need help with that, computer skills, things of that nature. So let's focus on that as well, so we can make sure that, you know, they, they build their resumes and they, the positions that they're applying for correlate with what they actually know how to do.
Oh, definitely. And, and one thing, I'm, I'm not sure if you're aware of, there's WorkSource Atlanta that is here in Clayton County, in the Morrow area. And on our website, we have our Workforce Development Resource Guide, where people can find career centers like WorkSource Atlanta. And we've also bridged that conversation too with them of, okay, how do we collaborate? How do we work together? That's the... That's the whole point of our Clayton Works Initiative, is connecting the education, you know, the training organizations, all of them together, so we can work on workforce development as a collective and not separate entities.
And, you know, I just wanna put that out there, so people will know, you know.
Definitely.
Thank you, thank you for everything you do.
Questions?
Yes. First, Ms. Borger, you are always such a beautiful light when you come in here. You're one of our very own, and I was missing your brother quite a bit, but when you come in here, it works for me, you know? You're doing an awesome job, you're part of our own, you came up through Clayton County, your parents have been involved in the community, you are who we are proud of in Clayton County, what we want to continue to reproduce. But the other thing is, I wanna make a quick note, go back real quick. Commissioner, I don't know if you're aware, but the A R C actually just planted their feet here, and they actually did a big grand opening of their work center, and that center is responsible for the resumes that you were just speaking of. And I went to one of your job fairs where they were there, they were involved, and it was very good. But I also noticed the school system is out there, and I think it's a good point that we gotta make, that that testimony came from one of our very own business owners in Vegan. And Vegan actually is owned by Clayton County resident, and their families actually, and their kids matriculated through Clayton County Public Schools, went to school with my children, and they've actually opened their second location at Lennox. So too often, we're looking for businesses to come into Clayton County, but we have to remember, we also grow restaurants out of Clayton County, and if we support them, they can become as big and still involve as in Vegan, great, great family. But I'm looking forward to continuing our partnership, especially with the Perry Learning Center, and then moving forward to even get more of those testimonies. I would like for our board to consider to put some of those testimonies even on our website, 'cause it does make a difference. And then, just to piggyback on the last thing, one comment that was made earlier, I think that once you get through making sure everybody has an opportunity to get a job, we have to then focus on not necessarily just the hard-to-fill jobs, but the ones that are going to raise our income level. 'Cause fifteen to sixteen dollars is great, especially for somebody in my pocket like a Warner young man, but the point is, my own child, but the point is, we need to get those folks who are living in our county, driving all the way to Macon, as you just heard, to Warner Robbins, get them to come here to work. We need those jobs here.
Yep.
So thank you so very much. So proud of you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like for the Development Authority to come to one of our work sessions and give us information on the other part of what you all do, as far as bringing businesses into the county. I would like to know the status of some of that and what's going on.
Definitely, we can definitely do that.
Commissioner Davis, you have anything?
No questions, thank you.
Okay.
Again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for always representing. All right, next up is Clayton County Public Schools, Dr. Smith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, staff, community. Thank you so very much for allowing for us to give you an update on our partnership with the arena and taking advantage of this time and hitting some highlights about our facilities development plan that we're prepared and have gotten approved through the board. But before I get started, can we acknowledge our illustrious superintendent, Dr. Morcys J. Beasley, who's here to support us this evening?
I thought you were gonna talk about the Georgia thing.
Well, well, thank you so much. We are gonna talk about a billion-dollar initiative spread over three SPOSS periods, but we're trying to be creative and insightful and smart about how we get these projects done. And these projects have been designed with a lot of thought in mind. We're not just trying to build new buildings just so they can look shiny and pretty. We're trying to be impactful as we do our development. So some of the areas that we're trying to do is modernize all of our schools that was built in the fifties and sixties. We're trying to impact our pre-K levels at early learning by creating more early learning centers. We're trying to create a more staff environment for our students so they can have more lucrative opportunities in the tech field, as Commissioner Davis always espouses about. And also, we're trying to impact our athletic programs to ensure that we're more competitive, because athletics is a big part of this county's DNA. So having said all of that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I have, as my co-presenter, Mr. Ronik Joseph, he's our construction chief, and I'll toss over to him some of the projects that we're wrapping up in the current SPOSS, which is due to expire in about a year or so. And we'll share a little bit more about how we plan on putting that out to the public. So, Mr. Joseph?
Well, good evening. So we'll quickly give a quick summary of SPOSS six, where we've gone and where we're going. As you all know, we have completed Michelle Obama on the south end of the county. That opened August of last year. Again, thank you for the partnership and all the work that we've done with all your inner government agencies. Ongoing is the new Morrow High School on the north end of the county. We are roughly eighty, fifty-nine percent complete, and we are scheduled to open that facility August of 2022. That is off of Steel Road and Stagecoach. Project that's currently under design is the Forest Park Middle School. We will be using the existing site to construct a new facility there. In order to accommodate that, we will relocate the students at Forest Park Middle to the old Morrow Middle School. It will take roughly eighteen months to construct. The next initiative associated with the current SPOSS is the graduation facility. As you all know, in October of last year, we closed on the Sears property. We are currently in design. There's a partnership between the county and the board commissioners, and we will discuss that towards the end of the presentation, and we'll discuss program and partnership. Then lastly, we have some athletic improvements at the high school level, and Dr. Smith's gonna discuss that here briefly.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Dr. Beasley is here because he's on the precipice of really bringing a great partnership to this community, and he'll share more about that after we come back to the arena conversation. Yeah, so what we're trying to do, and we're trying to do these projects immediately. We have some very non-competitive athletic programs in our schools right now, and we're trying to do something about it. And one of the things that we need to do to lure more coaches is have more updated athletic facilities. And we're trying to get these projects off the ground this spring, so when the students come back in the fall, they'll have the benefit of all of these shiny new athletic facilities outside. For an example, each school, we're looking to spend about fifty thousand dollars redoing their baseball fields, leveling it, reseeding it, making it look brand-new. Fifty thousand on the softball fields. We're looking to spend seventy-five thousand on football fields, making certain we do the same for them. We're looking to put fifty thousand dollars' worth of irrigation into the initiative to ensure that we can make certain that we maintain it. We're looking to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a rubberized track. We're looking to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on concession stands with restroom in close proximity of the fan seating area. We're looking to spend two hundred thousand dollars on new tennis courts. We're looking to spend a hundred thousand dollars on fencing with wind screens that highlight the school's mascot, et cetera. Am I leaving anything out, Mr. Joseph? Oh, yeah, and we're looking to spend about fifty thousand on dugouts for the baseball program and for the softball program. And this is at all eleven, all nine high schools that have athletic programs across the county. We have eleven, but of course, Elite and Stillwell doesn't have the robust athletic programs that the other schools have. Now, SPOSS six will expire in a year or so. We'll be entering into SPOSS seven. And here are the things that we're trying to get done into SPOSS seven. We're trying to have a focus on replacing our nineteen-fifty schools and creating early learning centers. We're also trying to make certain that we modernize or replace various schools. We're trying to make certain that we focus on some athletic needs, transportation, and technology. But I'm focusing more on the facilities for this, for the purpose of this meeting tonight. So in our night, and the schools that we have that was built in the fifties, Lake City, Lake City Elementary, Morrow, Huey, Edmonds, Fountain, and Hendrick Drive, which is Unidos. And these are the, the slide that you just saw was the enrollments at those various schools. So what we're looking to do, I wanna make certain the community is clear, we're not looking to take any school out of inventory. So folks that have this historic attachment to facilities, you can rest at ease that we're not looking to do anything to remove those schools or facilities from our community. For the folks at Fountain and other places who have a, just a strong attachment to those facilities, rest assured that they're not going anywhere. We're just gonna modernize. And so what we're looking to do is we're looking to spend forty thousand on a new Morrow Elementary School, I'm sorry, forty million on a new Morrow Elementary School. I was about to say, we could get a lot more done. And also, we're looking to spend two million on making certain that we refocus Lake City Elementary into a early learning center, making, we're gonna design it that's more adaptable to the young students. We're looking to have wraparound services on-site, dental, vision, assistance services for the families who may need it, the young families who may need it, career development, all of those kinds of things, we're looking to have on-site at the early learning centers. And one of the reasons why we're focusing on that is because right now, we have, we serve about nine hundred pre-K students. Well, we have about three thousand kindergarten students. So there's a gap between the nine hundred that we serve to make certain that we, you know, ensure that they're exposed to a rigorous curriculum at a young age. And the other two thousand or so, some, half of them at private pre-Ks, and half of them are probably on with Auntie or somebody being raised, and when they come to kindergarten, they pretty much stay behind all the way through their senior year. So we're trying to change that tide by putting a focus on early learning and creating centers throughout the community strategically, throughout the community. So we're looking to spend forty million on Huey, and we're looking to redirect and repurpose Edmonds into an early learning center, looking to spend forty million on Fountain Elementary. And I know that Fountain, you know, really is a, is a school of interest to a lot of citizens here in Clayton County, and we wanna make certain that we make that a source of pride for anybody who has any connections with that facility and with that school. And we're looking to create and refocus Hendrick's Drive to an early learning center. And we're also looking to turn Kemp Elementary into an early learning center, and the old Riverdale, the old elementary school, we're looking to redesign and make it one of our most robust early learning centers, and spending about twenty-five million on that school. So that, the new Fountain Elementary will be a STEM school like the Michelle Obama. So instead of having one in the county, we'll go from one to four during this first phase, which will be currently the Michelle Obama School, Fountain will be a STEM school, Morrow will be a STEM school, and Huey will be a STEM school. Also, we're looking to, and of course, like I mentioned, the old Riverdale school that has a lot of vandalism and all that kind of stuff going on, we're gonna tear that thing down and make it a beautiful site for this community. So listening to the people coming at the podium and speaking tonight and having knowledge about all of the robust projects that are going on throughout the county with the Economic Development Committee that y'all are involved in and the various municipalities, we wanna make certain that we do our part here in Clayton County. We wanna make certain that we got cranes swinging around here, knocking down old stuff, building new stuff along with everybody else. And when we put all those initiatives together, we're gonna change the direction and the whole focus and look of Clayton County. So we're trying to make certain that we do our part. So during this first phase, we are looking to go from about nine hundred slots for pre-K students to twenty-five, three times more, over three times more than what we currently serve. Next slide. And you can see on the map right here how they're strategically throughout the county. No one particular part of the county is, is taking advantage of having everything in their, in their area. We're spreading it out. And also, in this next round, we're looking to do a new North Clayton complex, not a school, complex, like we did with the old Morrow High School. That is a complex. I know Mr. Chairman graduated from that school back in the fifties, so I'm sorry, I'm not sure when, but he's a graduate of that fine institution. And I know he would be beaming with pride as he ride by and see what we've done with his old alma mater. I mean, a state-of-the-art athletic facility, a beautiful facility, just a, just something that I think the community will be very proud of. But North Clayton will be like the Morrow complex. It will be more than just a school, it will be a complex. And also, we're looking to modernize Lovejoy High School. If anybody is, Mr. Chairman and some of the others were at the ribbon cutting when we, for the new Jonesboro High School, and you know what the old Jonesboro High School looked like, and you know what the new Jonesboro High School looked like. So when we say modernization, that's what we're talking about, whether it's a middle school or an elementary school. A modernization changes the entire dynamics of that school. Now, we don't have the luxury of being able to tear down buildings and build brand-new because of land. So the next best thing is to modernize them.
May I ask something right quick?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
What's the difference in, you're saying schools, and then you're saying complex? What's the difference?
Well, for instance, Morrow High School, when we generally build a school, a lot of, like Jonesboro, we just built a brand-new Jonesboro High School. We didn't do anything outside. But when we built the new Morrow, we built an entire complex with a robust athletic facility, a stadium, baseball fields, turf, all those kinds of things, tennis courts, all of that thing, it speaks to a complex versus just a school. And so as you can see, and this is a contingency plan, of course. We've already got through the first round of contingency by getting it approved through the board. Of course, this is something that the citizens will have to vote on and approve. And the reason we wanna present to you, because we're gonna need support as we go out and advertise and highlight and ask for support from our citizens, because this time around, we're gonna ask for them to support us during this, do bond issuance, so we can get these projects done quickly. We don't have the luxury of waiting ten years for SPOSS collections to come in, and as they come in, we build it, come in, we build. We gotta get this done now. We're behind, and we wanna play catch-up. So we're gonna take the hit on the rate to get these things done within the next few years. And as you can see, impacted in this first round will be Morrow Elementary, Lake City, Huey, Edmonds, Fountain, Hendrick Drive, Kemp, Old Riverdale Elementary, Lovejoy High, North Clayton High, and a sundry of other things. All right, now, that's, that's a lot of schools and a lot of stuff that we're doing in this first round, because normally, within a SPOSS project, we do maybe three, four schools, five maybe, that's it. But as you can see, we're already up to eight, nine, just in the first round. Now, as we venture into SPOSS eight, which will be about five or six years out, we're going to do another robust round of modernizations of new facilities. And this time, we're putting our emphasis on schools that were built in the sixties. As you can see, we're gradually trying to make certain that we play catch-up and take out of inventory the old stuff and bring in new stuff. And, and so that's what the focus is on. And of course, early learning and the same focus that we had on the SPOSS seven initiatives and goals. And this time around, we're looking to do what we did to Fountain and, and all of those schools to make them a STEM school. Now we're looking to impact Suter Elementary. So that would give us five STEM schools, five. And of course, we're looking to repurpose Lee Street into an early learning center. So within that round, as you can see on the slide, not only will we go, and then I'll let Dr. Beasley come up, we're gonna talk about this arena, but just think about this, commissioners. Morrow, Lake City, Huey, Edmonds, Fountain, Hendrick Drive, Kemp, Old Riverdale Elementary, Lovejoy High, North Clayton High, that's ten schools. And as you can see, when we start talking about the modernization, now we're talking about Haney, Arnold, Church Street, McGarrett, Swent, Tara, West Clayton. Bowdoin Middle School, we're looking to build a brand-new our school. Monday's Mill, we're looking to build a brand-new middle school. Point South Middle School, we're looking to do a modernization like what we did with Jonesboro High School. So now we're up to about twenty-three, twenty-four. So now we're up to about twenty-three, twenty-four projects that we're either gonna modernize or build brand-new within a short time period of about six, seven years. And we're very excited about that and we wanted to share with the board, uh, that we're doing our part. We're doing our part to try to, to, to continue to, to, to move this community forward. And, uh, and, and, and we'll, you'll be hearing more about this and we certainly ask that you support, uh, these various initiatives. Now, let's get to the arena. Dr. Beasley.
Can we ask?
Oh, absolutely.
Commissioner Hammer.
How old is Mondays Mill Middle School?
Uh, Mondays Mill Middle School was, uh, it's a seventies school, even though, uh, you know, some of these schools just, it's tied. You know, based on rotation and we have a, so, some issues over there that we need that, that. To resolve those issues, we might as well commit that money to a whole new facility.
And to, uh, Mondays Mills was built with drywall, so that facility did not age well.
Cause I didn't think it was that old. Uh, a couple of things I'm done.
Yes, ma'am.
In the building, I know years ago when I was really active in, over in the school system, they were talking about building up instead of out. Are you all still considering that?
Uh, yes, as we, particularly our larger schools like our high schools and, and, and schools that have very little acreage.
Okay, and last thing, I don't know if you all know this or not, but, uh, I noticed the, the athletic, uh, uh, sports and all that you named, you did not name soccer. And, um, Drew High School basically have made their own soccer field over there. Are you all aware of that?
Yeah, they, every school has the, the, the football field is, serves as their soccer field.
Okay.
Uh-huh, and we're putting seventy-five thousand dollars into it.
Okay, I, I didn't hear you say soccer.
They, 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 they practice football and they, they, they play soccer on that field. And the high schools play official games at our stadiums, which is Twelve Oaks, Tara, um, Southern Crescent. And now we'll have Maro as a fourth stadium and eventually we'll have North Clayton as a fifth stadium.
But we're not gonna separate the football and the soccer fields?
Uh, no, ma'am. No, no.
Commissioner Anderson.
Um, I just wanted to ask you, so you're doing North Clayton High School. You're gonna do a complex. So what about the middle and the elementary? Um, how old are they and where?
They're not in the fifties and sixties and seventies yet. So we, everybody, you know, the, the thing about it is once you, you open this up, everybody wants, you know, wants to. But, and we'll get to them. We have to start somewhere and there's only so much we can do at a time. But, but valid and we're, we're gonna get to them.
And North Clayton Middle just received a massive renovation, roughly twelve million dollars.
Okay.
Yes, first I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Ms. Borger, I tell you, I'm gonna take you and, um, Dr. Smith before anybody. And there would be no reason we can't get investors into Clayton County with all that energy and information. So, uh, and then also I want to say thank you to Dr. Smith while Dr. Beasley is here because I don't know if the board realizes that our Boys and Girls Club would not have been stood up so quickly if it not had been for you, Dr. Smith, getting in there and making it happen. And we really, really appreciate it. So because of you, we got kids within our county that are being serviced, so thank you for that. Um, the other thing with these schools, I'm glad that you all are bringing this before us simply because I think it's imperative that we keep this in mind as we talk about developing out our community. Too often, we have citizens who come before us and say, well, our schools are overcrowded. And people gotta get out of that mindset. If we're not growing, then at the end of the day, what are we doing? So I'm glad to know that the school system is growing, you got plans for growth, and this amazing staff is managing it so well. And I just want to tell you, your facilities are top-notch. Y'all ain't got no buildings leaking after nine months after construction. I'm proud of the work you're doing. I hope Dr. Beasley paying y'all well.
Well, yes, he is. Absolutely.
Let me say this, uh, to, uh, piggyback on what, um, Commissioner Franklin was saying. As far as giving kudos, Dr. Beasley?
Yes.
I don't call you and bother you as much because this is my go-to man.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, whatever and returning calls and all, and I am so glad that, uh, we have somebody that we can really depend on. And thank you so much, Dr. Smith.
Well, I'd like to thank my boss. My boss gives me the latitude to get out there and get things done. He gives us the support we need. Am I right, Mr. Joseph? And, uh, and we can't be more grateful for, for him, uh, really pushing us to put a very visionary plan in front of him to recommend to the board.
And I got one more statement I want to make because I only work for them, I work for the entire community, especially the eighty percent. I think that what Commissioner, well, Madam Vice Chair brought up is key, and I think you hear something in both of us. Both of us started working in Clayton County school systems. Then we matric, and you, and matriculated to this position. I remember when I first moved to Georgia, you were working with my uncle over in Maro. I think it's important, as we were just talking about, Ms. Borger, it's okay for us to say that we need to focus on sustainability because your passion don't just come out of the air. It comes because you've been there. You've been in these schools. You've been coaching. You've matriculated through the school systems. Madam Vice Chair was in those schools working, and I think that our community needs to understand and hear this well. I have no objection to folks coming outside the county with great skills, but if we don't make sure that our folks in our county are in positions like yours and what we're doing here, then we're doing ourselves a disservice. So that's why we're seeing what we're seeing today as well. So thank you.
And I have another comment. I want to also thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Okay. I have another comment. I want to also thank you all because again, those STEM programs are gonna be key. And Ms. Borger, we need to make sure that we're working with the school system, making sure that we have STEM, you know, throughout our community as well. So that's gonna be the key, making sure we focus on those STEM programs, making sure that we're collectively working together. Thank you all. And Dr. Smith, you know, I've been working with you for about thirteen years. I know your work. I know what we do, uh, what we've done in the school system. And I say we because we are all one and we are all working together. And thank you for all that you do, Dr. Beasley and Rony. Thank you for what you do too.
And Dr. Smith, since we work so.
You know, Rony graduated from Jonesboro High School.
You're in the band, you're in the band.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Since we work so well together and all, and I was just eye contact with, uh, with our chief, a, a fire chief and all, who's a graduate of North Clayton High School, when you start on those projects, will you please put, uh, North Clayton number one?
Uh, well, uh, it is. I'm not doing it at your request. It's naturally going to be that way.
You sure? I'm not sure, but, um, go ahead and try.
I just have one kind of question. I, athletics, I love it. I see what you're doing, transportation technology, which if it weren't for athletics, I'd have never went to college. One of the things that I'm seeing and notice though, with the growing sport lacrosse, have we begin to give some consideration to bringing the lacrosse programs into Clayton County? As well as maybe all expanding the act, the definition of athletics. Jonesboro High School, they've got the mock trial team. And for them to begin to get funded through some type of athletics, even robotics, uh, there's the major competitions that are going on from a local level to a state level to a national level. It begins to grow and I think those, that athletic term definition should begin to grow a little bit so that they don't have to venture outside for external fundings.
Well, thank you, sir. I know we haven't really did a lot of study about bringing a lacrosse program to, uh, to the community, but we are looking to put a keen focus on our athletic programs with, uh, with developing students to be able to have opportunities at the collegiate level and so on. We're looking to, we're looking to bring back all of the people who have success stories from this county to come and support us. For instance, with the North Clayton Initiative, we're gonna sit down and meet with the principal, the athletic directors, and the many, many, um, uh, wonderful athletes that have gone on to big things like, uh, uh, Morgan Burdette, uh, Kyle Love, uh, DJ Shockley, his father, Two Chainz, so many people. That we're saying, we're gonna say, look, this, this is what we're doing in Clay. We're putting a significant investment into our programs. But they're not gonna get better just because of the concrete dirt and board, all that stuff. We need support. We need for you to bring whatever influence you have back to this county to help our students develop.
Yeah, and I just, I say that because many times in your larger metropolitan areas, we look at your primary sports, basketball, baseball, football. And we don't look at some of those secondary sports that give huge scholarships at the college level. Bowling, lacrosse, archery. A lot of these are also sports that some of our folks that aren't as athletic in those primary sports can begin to engage in as well.
Yeah, well, we were fortunate to be able to have a soccer pad, a mini soccer pad erected over at, uh, one of our elementary schools uh, to create more interest with minorities, uh, in the, in the area of soccer. So, uh, we're, we're getting there. We're getting there.
I'm real quick. I'm glad that, um, Commissioner brought that up. Have you spoken to our Water Authority Board to know about their plans? Because they actually are planning to develop out, uh, space for some of those, um, sports such as archery. Have you all had an opportunity to meet with, I think y'all, y'all have somebody on that interest group, correct?
We do and, uh, but we're going to, uh, Mr. Stanford, I gotta, uh, give a shout out to Mr. Stanford, uh, my, my great partner. Uh, we co-facilitate the Government Collaborative Meeting for Clayton. And we've talked about reas, uh, establishing those meetings, uh, for the month of March, at which time we will share with the various municipalities and entities that serve on that committee about our plans so they can be aware, share with us what they're doing, help us create, uh, prevent any kind of overlap or make certain we got support from other entities to help us enhance these programs. That's the purpose of that committee and we, and we, and, and I think it's very effective.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move, uh, forth. Dr. Beasley, sir, if you could come forward.
Okay, like I said, Dr. Beasley is working on a, a great partnership. But we've been going around on tours. As y'all know, that right now we got fifty million committed to this arena for eight thousand-plus seat facility. And, uh, we've visited Georgia State. We've been all around. Well, we recently went down to Savannah and saw their arena. And it gave us pause to rethink this thing, to figure out, how can we maximize our opportunity to enterprise it? Yes, it would be great for us to hold our graduation programs and, and, and all of those kinds of things, but the purpose is really to enterprise it. So when we first thought about the design, it was just going to be a big box, bunch of seats. Folks see an event, they go home. They eat some food and they go home. But when we went down to Savannah, we saw that if you got more suites, a lot of corporations, doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, private corporations, they buy these suites not only for the purpose of seeing the entertainment events, but they have par, Christmas parties, business meetings. They take advantage of that space throughout, not just waiting on the event to be able to have it and see it in comfort. So we thought that if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. So what we've done, we've upped our commitment from forty million to another fifteen million. So now we're at fifty-five and y'all ten, we're at sixty-five. And we hope that the commissioners reconsider that level of commitment.
Why did I know that was coming? Why did I know that was coming?
Because I know y'all believe in doing things right.
Oh, see me after this meeting.
But anyway, Dr. Beasley has some exciting news to share with us, uh, uh, and about, uh, what he's about to, you know, formalize in terms of what we consider a great partnership. Dr. Beasley?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for, uh, allowing Dr. Smith to, to share the work that he and Rony and, and others have been really spending a lot of time pulling together. And I thank you, Commissioner Warner, for really acknowledging. Sometimes people think that all your talent has to come from the outside. But these folk have been in Clayton County longer than I have, and they're doing great work, great work. Hopefully you, you, you all s, could see the potential and what's really, what the county's going to look like in the next five to ten years with the early learning centers. And hopefully you, you notice, if you think about what I shared a few weeks ago when I came, the goal is to give every pre-K eligible child in this county a seat. So parents don't have to go through a lottery and children can start out early, which we believe, according to our data, will help us close the achievement gap right here in Clayton County Public Schools. So just imagine where, where we'll be, where we could be, uh, as this vision comes to pass. So relative to the graduation facility and thank you all for your, your, uh, partnership and collaboration, the funds that you all are committing, have committed and will commit further once Dr. Smith brings you more, uh, uh, a request. But right now, I just want to share that in addition to the arena, uh, we did share that the College and Career Academy will be there. But several years ago, before we purchased this facility, we started having a conversation with Junior Achievement about creating a discovery center. If you've been to the World Congress Center, the, uh, Biz Town and Finance Park Center where kids go and experience a day in this little model city, uh, funded by Chick-fil-A Foundation. We began a conversation with them about placing a discovery center south of Atlanta in Clayton County. Well, we paused the conversation because we didn't have a facility. Well, now that we have one, we have resumed the conversation. So I just want everyone to know that we are in conversations with them and right now the conversations are looking rather favorably. So, uh, Chairman Turner and, and all other commissioners, we just need you all's support. Uh, we need you all, the influence that you have with the powers that be. Let them know that we want this in Clayton County. Honestly, um, our kids right now, they go, we bus them down to the, the World Congress Center to participate, but it would be great to have that s, facility right here in Clayton County in a great location right over there at the Stone, uh, at the lake, uh, not Stone Crest, but the Lake, South.
South Lake.
South Lake Mall, South Lake Mall. And it would be accessible to not only Clayton County, but the schools district south of Atlanta as well.
Let them bus, bus their kids to us.
That's right. Bring them to Clayton County. So I just wanted to share that. Dr. Smith, Rony and others, uh, have, and our architects for the facility, they have already met with them. And I got a call today that they thought that the facility was the most promising, uh, option that they have. So just want everybody to kinda, you know, offer up a little prayers and, uh, use your influence and, and, and as a community, if we can all be on the same page and say, we want this for our kids. You know, it's hard for people not to hear you when you're all in one voice and you have one expectation for our children right here in Clayton County. So more to come. I'll keep you all posted. Dr. Smith, have I fulfilled my assignment today?
We sent a video to every commissioner to, so they can have a greater understanding of what that scope zone is about.
Very good. Thank you. And Jada and her team will release a press release just to keep the community informed. Uh, since I believe this information is public, this forum is public, so we want to make sure the community is informed. But we'll continue, the team will continue to, uh, engage with Junior Achievement until we finalize and bring some things to a reality, one way or the other, right here in Clayton County. So thank you all for your support.
That's a lot of, uh, promising information, great, great news. Uh, like you said, takes a village, so listen. Everyone needs to do their part for us to continue to move forward and Clayton County is a great place. Obviously, we see great things are happening. Any other comments or statements for Commissioner Hammer?
SPOSS seven. When will that, when is that coming up?
Well, we'll share with them what we're trying to do.
So, uh, the current SPOSS expires December of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so SPOSS seven will begin in January twenty twenty-five. So we will, uh, uh, request the vote from the community either in twenty twenty twenty-three or early twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
All right, again, thank you for your presentation, very insightful. Thank you, Mr. Rony, for wearing the right mask. Go stains, right? Must stains. All right, thank, thank you, gentlemen. Keep up the good work. Appreciate you. All right, let's go to impact study or law enforcement incentives. Mr. Reed.
All right, good evening again, continuing on the theme of education. I need your help. All right, so, um, again, on continuing to talk about public safety com, uh, compensation. Uh, the summary of, um, the presentation to, okay, summary of the presentation today. I'm gonna give you an overview of the issues, discuss or bring for your discussion some of the policy implications, uh, and then talk a little bit about next steps. So again, uh, this continuing what we talked about back on December fourteenth. Uh, there's ongoing competition for qualified public safety. Um, as you recall, Dennis and, um, and the two chiefs, uh, talked about how they train employees and they lose in the other jurisdictions. And so this board talked about some policy, uh, implications to attract and retain, uh, employees. And one of those is a compensation strategy, uh, some benefit improvements, it's also a revenue, uh, increase. And I'll talk a little bit about, um, focusing mostly on the compensation strategy and just briefly highlight these other two, um, items for our next work session. So, uh, compensation strategy, one is education incentive. This is what we'll spend, uh, most of the, uh, time on this evening. Uh, currently, just to kinda give you a background, there are two education incentives that this county has in place. One for, uh, fi, uh, police and one for fire. The police incentive currently, it appears to have started in two thousand and six. The police incentive currently, it appears to have started in two thousand and six, according to some documentation we have, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. So three point seven, five percent bonus for associate's degrees, seven point five percent bonus for bachelor's degrees. And then the police also have a pay for three versus six-year post-certified experience in which the chief has the authority to move someone a step up in grade based on their post-certified experience combined with their educational background. Fire's incentive started with the adoption of a 2016 strategic plan. It was phased in over a three-year period. It started with in 2017, employees that are ten years and above. Then in 2018, it went to employees between five and nine years employed. And then in 2019, those who were entry up to five years employment. Currently, the fire incentive has the same three point seven five percent bonus for associate's degrees, but their bonus for bachelor's degree is only six point two five percent. It's for sworn bullets only in those that are state certified. And the chief does not, a fire chief does not have a signing bonus or an increase based on years of state certification. So that's just, this little chart here kind of gives you what I explained kind of in a visual format. So the signing bonus, again, is for those who come in from outside the jurisdiction. They can give them a little bit extra. So there, right now, there's no education incentive for Corrections or the Sheriff's Office. Based on information provided from Corrections, there are sixteen total eligible sworn employees that would be eligible for incentive. And for the Sheriff's employees, it would be forty-seven sworn employees. So there are some questions to consider. Again, this board had directed us to provide a resolution or provide something for you all to vote on, on this educational incentive. So because you've got two separate percentages, one for fire and one for police, what percentage does this board want to see? And I've given you the cost for Corrections and the Sheriff. So if you look at the first column in fiscal year 2022, it would cost, if we had just implemented a six point two five percent percentage, just like fire, it twenty-six thousand dollars for Corrections, sixty-eight thousand dollars for Sheriff's Office, a total of ninety-five just for this fiscal year. If we bumped that up to seven point five and made it even across for police, fiscal year seven point five, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-two, thirty thousand for Corrections, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen for the Sheriff's Office. And that sixty-one thousand represents those fire employees who are only getting paid six point two five percent now. If we bumped them up to give them that extra so that everybody's at the same level of parity. So the total amount for fiscal year 2022 would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand, twelve dollars. Going, of course, going into fiscal year 2023, you see that, those same columns. If we just left it at six point two five for the Corrections and Sheriff's Office, it'd be one hundred and ninety-one thousand. If we raised everybody to have the same level of parity at point, seven point five, it would cost about three hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-three dollars for all three agencies.
Chuck?
Yes. And I wanted to stop here to have, to lead for discussion.
Commissioner Ham?
Okay, fiscal twenty-two?
Yes.
Ends June thirtieth, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we would need to do something before that time and then consider whatever we're gonna do for the fiscal twenty-three.
Right, I wanted to show you what, if you were to implement something immediately or as close to immediately as you can vote, it would roughly be around a hundred and seventy-two thousand, up to a hundred and seventy-two thousand depending on what this board would like to see.
And that includes everybody, the whole gamut?
Correct.
And this is based off of existing folk that have these degrees?
That's correct.
Or it's not estimated?
That's right. We've gotten information from Correction, from all four agencies. We already, I did not include police in there because they're, they're already getting paid for their stuff. So I'm only including those that would be added to.
Okay, but, okay, so, but police would be included in the twenty-two?
They're already being paid now.
They'll be included in twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Well, going forward, whatever we stated, that's.
Right, so the reason why I didn't include police, because they're already a part of their budget, includes this educational incentive at seven point five for those people. This is what would be in addition to what, to bring everybody else up to where the police is right now, or the fire, if you wanted to go at six point two five. Either one, that's the additional, it would be beyond what you already are paying.
Okay, another question that I have, based on this, this is based for bachelor's degrees.
Correct, because everybody's at the same level on associates.
Well, on associates, I thought you said, well, you didn't put the police in there because you said they were at three point seven five. Fire was zero.
And I'm glad you brought that up, yes. So for Corrections and Sheriffs, that includes both associates and bachelors.
Okay, I thought one of the reasons for us doing this or requesting this information was to do something for the group now. But now you're saying that the police already does this. But I thought it was supposed to be something in addition to.
So this is only part one. There's gonna be another discussion that I'll get to later on a total compensation change for all of law enforcement. But this, the board at the last, at the December fourteenth meeting, wanted us to put something together on an educational incentive. But as we were gonna put something together, then these, all these issue came up. So I needed to come back to you all and ask you, well, how did you want to address the different levels of compensation between fire and police? What percentage do you want to do for the agencies that are not participating in a education incentive right now? And what percentage do you want to do? And I wanted to show you the budgetary impact of those choices.
Okay, okay, because part of the presentation given by the two chiefs was that they are losing people to other areas.
So this is, again, I'm only dealing right now with the educational incentive. We will continue the discussion that we've been talking about on the overall, how do we keep people as far as raising salaries and all that kind of stuff? But the board's direction from the fourteenth was something, get this done like right now.
And I can answer the reason why I said that, because I have an understanding of risk class, okay? So what this board did before we got on here, and I know we did it in 2016 too, but in oh-six, they put something in place, which honestly behooved me that we couldn't find the information. But they took a certain risk class and took them out and gave them a certain pay. That's a space you don't want to get into, because all of these folks, whether they're Corrections or Sheriff's Office, they're all sworn officers. And so I don't know how HR did that before or allowed it, but I could tell you that's something we need to clear up as a board. That is very, very problematic, to pay one, these people are in the same risk class. Let me say that again. That means they're sworn officers as Corrections, sworn officers as Sheriff, and this board decided to pay one group of risk class different versus another group. And that needs to be corrected. So that's why I thought it was imperative that we, as soon as it was made, we were made aware of this, we need to bring it back into the right standing. And then we do need to move on, as Commissioner stated, because they are losing people. And we need to get that done as well. So I'm looking forward to the next presentation.
So I guess from this board's perspective, are you looking at wanting to make everybody get seven point five for bachelor's degrees?
For me, I'd like to hear the rest is the compensation.
Correct.
Because they build on each other.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, let me move on. So right now, the incentive for educational is only for sworn certified personnel. Do you want it only to include that? Or do you want it to be include non-sworn or, you know, non-certified personnel?
So what are you asking? Are you asking?
Let me put it like this, sworn personnel are those who went through mandate school. Certified, non-certified are those such as your, your non-sworn rather, your correctional officers. Now, they do receive a certification because they have to go through basic jailers' mandate, but they are not sworn, they don't carry weapons. Now, we need, as a policymaking board, delineate between sworn or non-sworn.
Right.
First responders, and I guess you couple that with the fire department, who definitely are out there, answer calls for service. But they go through fire mandate school as well.
They do. And there will be, and I don't want to necessarily spend a lot of time on that. We're gonna bring to this board some definitions, comprehensive definitions, so that we can understand when we say first responder versus public safety versus law enforcement versus sworn, that everybody understands when you use those terms, who are we talking about? And so I don't, we don't necessarily need to deal with that for this particular discussion, except for, when I say sworn, I mean people who have state certifications, like post-certification or for the fire, they have state certification. Right now, the education incentive is only for those. There may be others who are not state certified, who may have bachelor's degrees or associate's degrees. Do you want to expand that educational incentive to them as well? Or just leave it with your sworn officers?
I think we need to take some time and marinate over it.
Okay, and so these are discussion, now, so this necessarily, you don't have to make a decision on that today, but these are just things for you to consider. The police, as I mentioned, they have a longevity bonus that they can provide. The chief can decide to move people up and down based on that. I mean, I'm saying that, not down, but they can, they can take into account someone else, years of service in another agency. Should that also be extended to other law enforcement or public safety, law enforcement officers like Sheriff, Fire, Corrections? And when should the educational benefit go into effect? So there's a couple of ways this can go. If we looked at it, doing it like between now and June thirtieth, of course, it would have an impact on the current budget. If we looked at it as part of the, in total budget for next year, then, I mean, and you can, we can do it on next year. It could be spread out, kind of like the, like Fire did with addressing certain people from this year forward. Those are things to consider. Again, if we're not prepared to make a decision on that right now, it's just something for you to consider. Another issue is proactive versus retroactive. Again, you know, you're talking about people who, for the police, have been in since two thousand and six up to two thousand and sixteen for a fire. If you wanted to do for people, and when I say retroactive, I mean, say I got a degree in two thousand and twelve. Should I get a bump from the two thousand and twelve to now? Not necessarily going back and doing all that. So it would provide an extra sum to Corrections, CCSO from the date of the degree. However, I think you should limit it to current employees. That means employees employed as of the date of whenever you decide to make that decision, so you don't have people calling who no longer work here saying, hey, I want extra money. Now, there are significant cons to doing a retroactive. First of all, the cost, impact on your budget. Again, retroactivity, if you're going back sixteen years, someone who had a degree in two thousand and seven, you know, impact, possibly impact on pension, impact on the fire fund. Again, I'm bringing you all this information for you all to consider, one way or the other. I think the cons kind of outweigh the pros, but again, that's gonna be for the board to decide on what you want to do on that. Okay, so there's two funding sources for the economic incentive, general fund, fire fund. And just briefly, just the fire fund is, you know, that five mils that is collected from tax, that's a cap. So if, once there's decisions that are made on those employees who are, who are paid through the fire fund, you're gonna eventually get to a cap where they can't go and it's gonna have an impact. If they can't pay out of the fire fund, it's gonna have to be general funds to help offset that impact. All right, so that's on the educational incentive. Again, on the comprehensive overall starting pay, this is gonna be talked about at our next board session, which is on the twenty-fifth. Dennis is gonna provide calculations of salary increases at five, ten, fifteen, and twenty percent for all four public safety entities. And they talk about the impact of this increase on, with consideration of the budget, talk about funding sources and timing options. Again, just to remind you what he had said at that last meeting. Also wanted to quickly just go through a couple of things that are already in place, that this board has already done. You all provided in 2019 a program to incentivize law enforcement to come and relocate to Clayton County. That technically ended in 2021, but that is something for you all to look at year after year, if you want to continue to do that. And that was a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand allocated for Fire, Police, and Sheriff, and that those employees received a month, could receive a monthly stipend for a year for two hundred and fifty dollars a month for homeowners, or one fifty for people who had leased or rental agreements. So that's something that you all can, if you decide to, with part of the 2022 budget, pick that back up again.
Let's make a quick note there, because I didn't realize when we passed it, we left out Corrections.
Correct.
We need to fix that.
Okay, so yes, so that's something else to consider. And there was forty-five thousand dollars for each entity, that's how you came up to the one thirty-five.
How many people have taken advantage of that though, Mr. Reed?
My understanding, I think it's eleven.
Okay, well, that's more than what we had.
Right.
Part of that incentive was also they had to move to Clayton County.
That's correct.
So they live in the county.
They live in the county.
I'm aware of that. I just want, because see, the thing is, is we're looking at these benefits. We always pass things, but we very often get reports on how much of that fund is used. All we get is, Commissioner was saying earlier, or Vice Chair was saying earlier, is we see that we passed it, but we don't get an update on it. So we want to know what is the actual dollar amount. And we only see it during that budget process, and it's embedded in all the rest of the information. So if these incentive programs that we got in place, if they're not being advertised enough, if that money's not being used, as we're making the decision, it ain't one thirty-five. It's not one thirty, we need to look at what the actual amount is.
And so then also, again, there's a, the discussion of life insurance benefits, of course, up to a hundred and fifty. I think Ms. Ambles had brought that up, or Director Ambles had brought that up last in this board and approved that increase on September twenty-first, 2021. I bring that to your attention because I don't want there, you know, because these are public meetings, there to be a narrative that you all are not responsive to the issues that are going on, trying to make the county a place for law enforcement to come and attractive and be retained. So these are things that you all are, have been doing, going back even as far as 2019. The next issue, which we will not talk about, but this is again part of the big picture today. We're not talking about this today, but it's part of the big picture, is the Public Safety Foundation. And we'll talk a little bit about more about that at the next work session. So as far as next steps are concerned, there needs to be, once we decide on, or once the board decides of what you want to do as far as your education incentive, it needs to be codified somewhere. In other words, put somewhere in writing. And there's three ways that can be done, either ordinance, a resolution, or civil service rules. Now, my recommendation would be to place it in the civil service rules. The reason why is because the PD educational incentive is not codified. It's part of a budget, it's part of a budget line item that, and it was a discussion, I believe, between a former chair and a long ago police officer, police chief. Again, fire and emergency center services educational incentive is a line item in the budget. It's not, it's not a, it's not written in your, in your civil service rules It's not, um, it's not a, uh, it's not written in your, in your civil service rules or anything like that. If you place it in your civil service rules, it gives clarity for that program beyond just the memories of the people who are sitting here on the dais or people who are employed. Um, also, because of the specificity of percentages and who's involved and definitions, that it, it affects a number of employees. It gives them clarity about what you're going to be doing. It's accessible. You're not having to try to figure out resolution 2022 dash 22. You can go to civil service rule whatever, and recipients and implementers can look and see, how does this fall, how does this, uh, work? Um, you know, how do you, how do you put it together?
How, how long does that process with civil service?
It does require prior approval by the bo- civil service board. Um, my recommendation would be to add it to civil service rule five under the compensation plan. This could come back to this board in February. There's a civil, there's a civil service board meeting on, I'm sorry. Yes, a civil service bor- uh, board meeting on, uh, January 26th. Um, there's enough, if the board is not ready to make a decision on some of these decisions, you know, today, the next civil service board meeting, I think, is in mid-February. So it would come back at the next meeting after that. And so, i- i- there's any, if there are any other questions for me. Obviously, some of these things are going to have to be decided before I can write something for you all to be able to adopt.
Yes, well, also, in addition to that, make sure that you send us either this PowerPoint or those questions. We need to be contemplating. That way, we can study them and get ahead of the game.
I'll see it.
When it comes up.
I'll send each of you this PowerPoint here, uh, so you can actually see the, the chart of what is what. And, uh, certainly, I'm available to, um, wh- when we come back on the 25th, if there are additional questions that you all have, um, that you'd like to see, just reach out to me and I'll make sure I provide that to you all at the work session on the 25th.
And on the 25th, we will have those, uh, numbers from finance in terms of the financial impact.
Uh, you know, I have a question. You know, I'm always asking about.
Sure.
Grant funding. What, what type of grant funding do we have that we can use for this?
For, for educational grants? I don't think that's. Yeah.
It has to be a sustainable source.
Right.
Sustainable source.
Uh, and when we're talking about funds, see, I, this is why we have to be mindful of the fact that there are certain funds that are for splosh, certain funds for economic development, like purchasing of land, property, stuff like that. But we have a very hefty, hefty fund balance. And I want everybody to understand that the basic role of government is to collect taxes and provide a service to the taxpayers. And we have been addressed by our, our police chief, by our fire chief, that they are having difficulty delivering services to the taxpayers based upon what's currently in place. So let's all keep that in mind when we're talking about where we're getting it from. The second thing is, we know that the water authority is the only entity that is actually putting in what's called impact fees. So as we discussed earlier, we're talking about zoning and we're talking about bringing on new development, which we have to grow. Anything that does not grow is in, uh, is in a dying stage, and we want to grow as a county. So we have to have what's called smart and strategic growth. So we know with growth comes a bigger impact to our community. So I really would like for us to, as, um, was stated once again by, uh, Vice Chair, look at during the bud- budgetary process, that we don't just look at what the burden is going to be per se, but we look at how do we make sure that we have sustainable growth and strategic and smart growth so that we can do the basis of our jobs, collect those taxes, and deliver services. So I think that at some point, we need to pick that up. Because we've got, we just looked at the re- or organizing of these, um, maps, and I know like in district, District Two, we just passed with the, the whole, uh, concept of developing and getting folks out there. We got developments in all of these various districts. That development must happen with those impact fees in place so that we can make sure that we can deliver the service to the community.
Chairman, may I?
Commissioner Davis. I, I don't think the question here is whether or not these folks need and deserve a pay raise. It's from a logical, a way of how do we begin to implement this strategy? We only have so much money, no matter what folks want to believe. And we've got to figure out a way to be financially responsible with those funds. How are we going to sustain these pay raises going on? Will we, will we have to continue to dip into fu- to our fund balance, thus decreasing that and, and increasing our financial risk? I, I think we have to begin to look at, uh, look at this from that standpoint. And we also have to say, can we do this without incurring a tax increase to our citizens?
You can.
So we've got to begin to look at this from several state, from several different, um, directions. I believe also to, we need to look at both indirect impact as well as direct impact, meaning our, to begin to, uh, invite them into the, the county. Can we do it by something as simple as saying, look, as far as life insurance, instead of having $25,000, have two, three times your salary, uh, to go that. They're putting their life in line. We've got, we've got a couple of officers that just lost their lives. We have to ask, what's the financial impact to those families, especially if they have small kids? So I think we have to begin to, to, to split that and say, what are the direct costs? And what are our indirect costs in moving this forward? And how do we sustain this? Now, would our citizens say, yes, I am for a tax increase in order to do this? I think we have to look at this from a very financially, um, considerate way to all, to get this done.
I, I just, I, and I think that this is, I'm sorry, this is a healthy conversation. And I won't, I'm so glad we're having this here. I'm glad you brought that up, so I'm going to repeat again. The basis of our government is to collect the tax and provide a service. Nobody's talking about raising any taxes. Let's not put that out there. The bottom line is, we have to grow as a county. We cannot enter into this with a non-growth mindset. So understand, as, as one that used to be an internal auditor when I first moved into Georgia, you have to not only look at your current cost and future cost, but you have to weigh your risk cost. So with the risk cost of everything that we're dealing with, we understand that we are going to grow, and the growth is coming. And we've got to make sure that we have things in place to make sure that we're taking care of the basis of our job. And that's why we got to look at the impact fees. For, for right now, the impact fees will give us that level of sustainability. If you look at other governments that are growing so beautifully, you look at the growth that we all look at and marvel at in Atlanta and in Gwinnett and all of that, it's not, it doesn't matter whether your budget's 300 million or 3 billion. At the end of the day, it's what you do with your money. So we shouldn't be using general fund to purchase land and things like that. That general fund is to pay for these services of these officers and these first responders. And so that's why we need those impact fees. Secondly, I want to bring to this board, I know, I went to Chicago, and I know somebody on the board went there too. But the point is, uh, we met with the mayor of Chicago, and then a week later, not even a week later, she was begging the president, I need some help. Do you know what President Biden went and told her? I gave you the resources. So we've got a lot of impact on our community, community right now because of COVID and everything else. That ARPA funding, CARES Act funding is for us to get us going right now, while we're working on getting those impact fees in place as we grow with sustainability. It is going to be unconscionable. It is going to be fiscally responsible, and it's going to be also the right thing to do. No, we only got this. We only got that. Unless nobody ain't got no growth in their district, we should not have that as a mindset. We need to look at how we're going to grow strategically, how we're going to take care of those individuals within our community. Because it's unacceptable to have somebody that has to wait on a response time. And let me say this, it's unacceptable to get an email that we don't even have a 30, we can't go do anything with any over 30 feet and go service it. It's unacceptable that we got fire and police that are burned out because they got unfilled positions. So it goes back to our basic principle of governance. Simple as that. Find a way.
Chairman.
Commissioner Davis.
And we're not speaking about process. We're speaking logically. How do we begin to increase the pay for officers? Uh, I would never pay, running a business, my salaries out of grant money. I think it's irresponsible to do so. Being ARPA money or any of the other type of funding, I think it's irresponsible to do it. I'm also not going to base how we're going to move forward based off what we don't have or what we can have. I want to base it off what we do have now. What impact, do we have those impact fees in place now? So we be have, we have to begin to strategically look at how we're going to grow. But we also have to look at how we're going to grow based off what we have now, not what we're going to have tomorrow.
It is a plan, and I, and let me tell you what's beautiful about it. I'm glad you're talking as a business owner. One of the things that I was able to do before what the Lord called me to this position, and I loved it, is that I was able to keep my overhead to the point of the level of service that I had to deliver. So for you to say that it's irresponsible is not a correct statement. I hate to say it. Because the ARPA funding is there because there has been a increase on the pressures of our firefighters, our police department. We know that the mental health of our community is at the source of what we're seeing. Our chief of police came on to a community meeting and told us that they've seen the increase of the number of calls has been through domestic violence and with the pressures. This ain't something new. This is across the entire US. So again, that is why I would believe that the person who put this in for this, uh, money out there and told even Chicago, that's what the money is for. We need to use it for right now, so that as again, we develop out the impact fees, we can put those in place as well. We cannot make decisions based upon a limited mindset and growth. So I don't have anything else to say other than that.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, you have some?
Uh, yes. The presentation you gave regarding the education piece. Uh, that's, I mean, it's good information, but, and I don't know what the other commissioners think, but if we could put that, push that down the road to like 20, uh, fiscal 23 or something, and make a good decision on that. But I'm trying to remember what the, what both chiefs' request was when they came to us. Um, if we can get that really quickly and act on that.
That is right here. That's, uh, well, let's go back. Right here.
Okay.
That is going to be, uh, requesting, as you recall, there were, they, uh, uh, Chief Marcusson showed where we, where our salaries were in comparison with others and how we were the lowest, some of the impacts that he was having with, um, with just not having personnel, because by the time he trained and spent the time training, they were leaving. Uh, Chief, um, uh, Chief Roberts had a similar showing where we were in relation to others. And so, what, uh, Mr. Johnson said at the, at the, uh, December 14th meeting is that at this next coming meeting, he's going to provide responses, numbers, similar to what I did with here with this educational incentive, numbers that will address calculations at the 5, 10, 15, 20, how that affects all four agencies, what the impact on the budget, so that you all can have the information to be able to make a decision on how you want to move forward on that.
Can we concentrate on that right now?
Yes. And so, the, part of the reason why I brought this back was because the board had directed us to move forward on the education. Now, this can be done as part of a comprehensive m- matter. Um, we can focus on the starting pay issue and then bring the educational aspect as part of that or later on.
For right now, for right now, just bring back everything that has been proposed, bring back for the 25th. And then we'll make a decision at that time whether to separate it or which parts to move forward with, and what parts, uh, that can go through the budgetary process. Commissioner, uh, Anderson.
I'm not saying to use the grant money for raises. What I'm saying is taking, finding some grant money to help offset some of the things in the general fund, in the budget, so we can, you know, so we can save on a- as, as far as that aspect is concerned. So I know that part.
That part is being done already.
Okay.
Right.
But, but are we, you're saying it's being done, but do we have enough that we can't, you know, it won't impact our budget as much? That's what I'm asking.
I think some of that will be, um, brought to you all next work session.
So if we're good, then we need to make sure we pay people. That's the bottom line.
Well, I don't, I think that, I think that the, I think that, uh, that I'm going to defer to finance.
You know me, I want to get them paid, you know, but look. Yeah, I, I mean, people work, these, these people work hard for us. And just like Commissioner Franklin is saying, just like we're all saying, I think we all have good intentions. We all want this to happen, and we know you're going to bring it back. But the thing is, we need to get this done, and we need to get it done now. And I don't like to use the word lawsuit, but we need to get it done. And I think we all know why.
Well, let me, let me say this. Um, we bring this information for you all to make decisions. And so, once we give the information to you, when you say, jump, we want to go this direction, then we'll provide that information to you, and you say, do it, we'll figure out how to get it done. And so, the 20, I guess it's like a stay tuned.
Well, to your point, there, there's points of clarity that has to be, uh, worked out or worked through before we can move on to that next step. Because we got to do it, make sure that we do it in a, in a way that's going to, uh, is going to be clear and concise. Commissioner Anderson, you have some?
I'm still fussing. I said, just, I mean, we just can't keep, continue to lose people. We need, we need to pay people for what they're worth, and it's time to start doing that. I mean, how long has it been since they've had, uh, I would say, bought up to the compensation of other departments? How, how, how long has it been?
Other jurisdictions?
Couple of years. Yeah, come to the podium.
Um, Commissioners, I think we, I think in my presentation, I discussed where we did some public safety specific only COLAs in addition. And I think that was 18 and 19. We did some small amounts. To, to give you a framework, look, I'm putting together these costs. I know what they are. They're staggering. What I'm trying to do is to come up with a way to piecemeal it for several years to do it, to, to move us forward. That's the challenge. I can give you a recommendation, but I don't think we'll be able to pay for it. So, so keep in mind that we're going to be faced with financial reality because, look, our budget is dynamic. We have, we're losing revenues in spots. So we have to look at this on a much broader basis about what are we willing to do to get this? Uh, again, one of the things I'll have is a CO- I've been asked is a COLA for the rest of the employees because people have to get paid. You know, people expect parks and recreation centers to be open and to have people there to greet them. So this isn't a one-dimensional problem. This is a multi-dimensional problem. Uh, I'm going to use every funding source available. Um, I'm going to use whatever ARPA money I can moving forward. I'm going to use that money that we talked about from three years ago, but it's that going forward.
Right.
Number two, you're going to really need to look at some reality changes in terms of manpower and, and look at, say, you know what I'm not going to do? I'm not going to add any new employees this budget cycle, maybe for a while. I'm going to prevent the problem from getting bigger. The other thing is, we have an enormous number of vacant positions that I'm going to challenge you to, to freeze. Some of those will be in public safety. But they'll have, they have more than enough authorized positions, but we're inflating our budget because we're budgeting these positions that we know currently we can't fill.
Right.
So it's kind of like, so what I'm trying to lay out, and where the challenge is, is I'm waiting on budget submissions to come in. But I'm not, you know, it's a long process. Um, I need to go through the revenue lines, so I can give you an answer at the next meeting, but it's going to change probably six times between now and a budget adoption. So, so, but what we're looking for is a baseline to, to provide an answer for what we're trying to do. Now, keep in mind, one of the things we did in ARPA, if you remember my presentation back in August, we did $4,000 in September for all the public safety folks, and we're doing another one in April. So there'll be some people that's, that stay, have that incentive to stay because they will get another, the second payment of those individuals. So I think that's something that kind of just, they'll have to look on the front. Yeah, and we've submitted all our, uh, grant posi- grant monies from the state to get another $1,000 for our public safety folks. Um, we're waiting to hear back on those, but they were all submitted, and we even submitted the state, uh, the, the school board's, uh, police force as well. And we even submitted the state, uh, the, the school board's, uh, police force as well.
We, we are going to be waiting for that report like a security guard on the twenty-fifth, so please.
I might be out, no, just.
No, no, you can't go anywhere.
So, so, so no, I think we've got, we've, we've got a grasp of it. I have some preliminary numbers. Um, it's dynamic because it, it, everything changes. Where I'm concerned is, do we have any revenue outflows that don't make sense due to ARPA? You're going to see the court systems costs start to escalate. Like I'm already anticipating, not just on the requests, but we're going to see things. You've approved several contract increases that are going to be, add maybe a million and a half dollars to our operating costs.
Can we look at those separate too? And the, and, because the budget process is, um, I've actually gone over this budget process with several folks in the state and several folks that, uh, work for a large, uh, big six firms. And our budget process, y'all have done a good job, but there is much more to, to, to it. And you coming to this podium alone lets me know that we're going to get more this time around. But to see it just in a bucket, it's like we just pass it. But like you're talking about going through each line by line.
We do, and we do that anyway. The issue is, I'll inundate you with the detail that you want, every line, you know, that's not a problem.
I got you. So what I'm asking specifically, let me be clear, lead us to the water.
Okay.
As you're saying, there are areas that you're seeing money going out. When we're looking at these, it goes back again, I got to give Vice Chair kudos. She said, what are we going to do? We going to do this all throughout the year or we going to do it at this one time? And I had to even realize that, that's part of the issue. Because if we're always approving contracts and increases in isolation, then we're not looking at all of our liabilities, financial liabilities as a whole. Vice Chair was actually right, so I'm looking forward to the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I mean, we, the, the challenge will be, um, what will happen to our revenue as a whole. Again, we don't even typically get a digest from the tax assessor's office preliminary to start things off till sometime in February. So we start to see, hopefully, the impact of construction and new, um, zoning and requests that have gone on in the county to help increase the digest, not increase the millage rate. Um, right now, you know, there's, my plan, just kind of what I'm looking at, doesn't, it doesn't have anything in terms of a millage increase. Now, again, it's, we're keep, we can keep the millage rate the same, but people will treat it as an increase. You know, we're not going to rage that numerical millage rate unless it's, it's a decision that is made by this board.
One other financial question, is there any way that as we're looking on the twenty-fifth, that you can, and you brought it up, is there any modeling that you're going to be able to do as we're looking at sustaining this growth moving forward with the growth of those projects that are coming up in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Are we able, do you have a, a means of modeling? If not, I know other agencies do.
No, what, what, what I'm going to do and my goal with this all is to present to you probably three to four years of funding for this. Okay? So in other words, I'm going to piecemeal all these funding sources together so that we can get to this number, because this number's big.
So I'm going to ask the question again in more clarity.
Yes.
Do you have a projection model to be able to include the information in the growth from the community development division? All, because we're approving these projects, but as we're looking at this money, if we know projects are coming up in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, do we have a projected model so we can know the income or the revenue that we're going to get from an intaxation?
I don't, only from a standpoint, as we don't even know when these, when these projects will hit, hit in place. Um, typically, I'll look two years out because as of like right now, you know, we're looking at the remainder of twenty-two and all of twenty-three. Um, so from our standpoint, you know, that's kind of our normal two-year budget is what's more standard in government finance in terms of looking ahead. Um, we don't really have a five-year or a strategic plan like you would look going forward. The issue with, you know, impact fees is, no one's adopted anything. We haven't, we haven't done anything with it yet. I can't, I have to, I have to do things that we have to count on.
I understand.
Like you, you know, I got to make payroll, I got to make sure we're doing those things. So, um, moving forward, I'm going to try to give you several years' worth of funding for, for these items so that you know you can sustain them. The issue's going to be going forward and looking at the entire county as a whole and what can we do to do things differently and more efficiently.
I, I have something real quick. I would like for both chiefs to come up, I, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, tomorrow morning, when you all meet with your people, from the meeting we had months ago when you all came to us making this request and for the night, what, 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 what do you have to tell them?
After this meeting?
Yes.
Nothing really. Let me be clear, uh, I'm glad we're on this slide. I think I was very clear when I came last time. I appreciate the extended discussion about educational incentive. Educational incentive is not bringing people to the Clayton County Police Department. Our salaries and our benefits are not competitive with our peers in the metropolitan region. So all that education talk is good. When we get people here, to hold them here, we're not getting people here. That's the conversation about getting people here.
Okay, I, I just.
Thank you, and I would go to echo what, what Chief Robert says. So what I tell my people is, and what I found out is, you know, public safety folk, that there's a thing called telephone, telefriend, telefireman. So, um, they know these conversations are, are going on and they watch these meetings. So, you know, my job is to try and explain to them what's going on. The benefit is, they know there's conversations going on. Um, now, does that translate into people staying put? No. And I'll tell you why. Signing bonuses are great, we, we, we've used that and that has helped us hold it. But here's what's happening. Many of our partners understand what our employment agreements cost. They understand what the signing bonus is, so that city's signing bonus covers those costs. So they're like, oh, you got four grand coming, well, we're going to give you fifteen to sign. So that'll cover your employment contract you have with the county. It'll cover your four thousand you got coming. They're going to get the same thousand from that municipality that they were going to get here from the state because they're still state-certified employees. So they're still going to get that thousand. So where we're sitting at right now, and I think why, you know, the chief and I jointly sent, um, an email back to, to Attorney Reed addressing this very topic is, our concern is our citizens have become accustomed to a level of service in Clayton County because we are both internationally accredited organizations. Staffing is a huge part of that. We're putting those accreditations at risk. We're putting our ISO rating, which is at a class one, which is the best that you can get from ISO, which means our citizens have access to the cheapest homeowners' insurances, our businesses, which is where that, that impact is felt at a much larger scale. When you look at Home Depot or a Walmart or a, a low temp that spends millions of dollars in this community, when they go to insure that investment, that class one to a class four is, is a, is a large part of money. That's predicated on staffing, it's predicated on resources, it's predicated on fleet. So the more our numbers keep doing this, we're putting years of hard work at risk that all that goes. Um, and then how do we sell a community that no longer has accredited police, accredited fire, an ISO rating that's going in the wrong direction? So what I tell my people is, hold on. Stick with us, this board has taken care of us for as long as I've been here and I've been in this county in public safety for twenty-eight years. Twenty-five of it's been with Clayton County, three with Riverdale, we don't talk about those three. But you guys have always taken care of our public, so we, we, we beg them, we plead them. Our paramedic numbers, you don't want to know what they are. You just simply don't. Um, and that's eighteen months to train another one, so that's not a quick fix for me. If I lose a ten-year paramedic, they write their own check. Because you go somewhere as a ten-year, five-year paramedic in Clayton County, they know there ain't nothing you ain't seen. There ain't nothing you ain't done. Your skills rival that of the, the most seasoned grady medic. So they write their own paycheck wherever they want to go. But if I lose one, it's eighteen months for me to train another one. So my goal is, is that I'll only not let them leave, but how do I go get that five, ten-year medic back? So that they want to stay here and that they understand, we ask you to work. Fire, you're going to run fifty-two thousand calls a year. And that's, that's moving, one right after the next. They work steady nineteen to twenty hours out of a twenty-four hour shift. They eating their ambulances, they eating their fire trucks. Rarely are they back in their fire stations. This isn't the fire service of the fifties where they sit around and play checkers and, and smoke in the stations. They work when they come here. And they know it. But they go home exhausted and many of them have to go work a second or a third job when they leave here. And then they come back forty-eight hours and do it all over again. So it's hard. I, I don't want to be in his shoes as, you know, they, they don't want nothing to do with our business, we don't want nothing to do with theirs. Um, I, I know it's hard to recruit law enforcement right now. When you get those ones that are, I say it all the time, if I had ten of that one, man, we'd be great. But those are the ones we're losing.
So it sounds like, did you want to wrap it up?
No, 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 don't.
No, so it sounds like we need to concentrate on, um, the, the salaries, the, uh, base salaries kind of thing and all. And, and, and like I said earlier, just, just kick the education piece down the road for now. But let's just concentrate and, and I keep saying every month, you know, same conversation, you know, let's, on whatever date that is, let's make a decision.
Commissioner.
If I may, I agree with you, Vice Chair, on what you're saying on what's the most important thing. Uh, but I don't think it's one and, and done and separate. Uh, I hear what you all are saying and I hear what our chiefs are saying. Because I have seen our folks, as far as Walker County, way up yonder, that have left Clayton County and they come in and saying, hey Felicia. I've seen them, when we had that dog that we just transferred, they walked in bragging, oh yeah, you got on your agenda tonight when you get back that we transferring your dog up here because they retiring to come on up here and they retiring out early. So I know this is happening, you're not telling us something that's not true. But we also, I don't think that with the ninety-five thousand, that that's something we got to just not do right now. I believe that we got to look at it from a holistic point of view, that if we're going to take all the incentives out, take them all out, that's fine. But at the end of the day, we also have a fiduciary responsibility to be consistent across our risk class. It doesn't have to be one in one class, one in the other. And I hear what you're saying, Chief, but what I'm trying to do is right or wrong. I mean, I was trying not to say it earlier, but there was a beautiful thing that cost us a lot of money called folks were coming in showing up fifteen minutes early. That's what that was about, that has to be fixed because it shouldn't have never happened. Now, whether we continue to go on with it, hey, that's the board's decision. But if we don't fix it, if I was the employee, I make sure that it is fixed. And it's called a, a little thing, uh, Auntie Mae is what I like to call it, not the real thing, I'm not going to say what it is. But, um, we got to fix that, but it's not two separate buckets. We can look at it going down the road. The only thing I ask as a commissioner with the incentive is make sure that corrections, as well as the departments were the same, because they shouldn't have never been separated out because the risk classes are the same, that's all I ask. But this is of utmost importance to me and I believe we're correcting our wrong because it does say PD, fire, SO, and corrections. So we are correcting our wrong moving forward as well.
So, long story short, bring back all the information that we asked for and then we'll decide hopefully on the twenty-fifth, uh, how to prioritize it. But make sure you have the financial impacts of each as well.
I'm aware.
All right, thank you.
And I do have one more thing, I think that we can get those projection models at least on the projects that have been approved.
Yeah, I could reach out to Mr. GK just to give me, um, his projection about some of these new areas when they'll come on board. The, the translation of that to the digest and our ability to calculate that is where we just need to make sure it all flows. And you give me information.
Just do your best, sir.
I'm going to work on a resource for you, okay?
We're not going to have. Sir, we're not going to have any outbursts. Matter of fact, there's no other business for this board, so we stay on the journey.
There is other business, real quick. Georgia one, y'all, y'all are certified commissioners. Come on now.